Thank you, Frank. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for March 18th, 2014, the High School Media Center. Tonight, we have Citizens Input at 7:00 PM. 7:05, Jack Orthellet and A.J. Dooley with Townwide Cleanup, once again this year. 7:20, Chief O'Leary, Regional Dispatch. 7:30 PM, Town Council, Splits Bill Settlement Agreement. 8:15 PM, William Casperis, Sharon Watson, Town Warrant. 9:00 PM, Executive Session with Attorney Leo Pelican and Attorney John Davis. Discussion to Conduct Strategy Session in Preparation for Negotiation with Non-Union Personnel or to Conduct Collective Bargaining Sessions or Contract Negotiations with Non-Union Personnel, United Steel Workers, Police Union Grievance, Pending Litigation, Town of Foxborough versus Great Divide, and for Randy Skollins. Okay. James, would you give us some applause?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Citizens Input? Anybody? Okay. Mr. Orthellet and Mr. Dooley, you have the mic. Please come to the table.
Well, we thank you very much for this opportunity. When we put together that cleanup last year in a short span of 28 days, when A.J. caught his breath, he said, "This is not going to be a one-time event. I will be back." And here we are with making plans for 2014. And A.J. has made the commitment of the trucks and the manpower. We planned out the routes. Anthony Spinatelli in his office runs the webpage. We've got contact information for all the local groups to get out to them. But we do have an opportunity to put a little different spin on it this year because the preferred date settled in as May 17, which happens to be Armed Forces Day. So here we have thoughts of the men and women serving our country around the world and an opportunity to do something for them as well. So what we would propose is to go through the regular program of the cleanup and all the different volunteers, the gloves and the water bottles and sacks. And A.J.'s always already picked out the color for the new shirts for 2014, and he provides all of those as well. But what we can do to work in the men and women in the Armed Forces is to pick up the good work of the Hero Helpers and the Hard Artillery, the two groups that are working in town already. They want to collect notes to the servicemen and women. I mean, I would really hope in something like this, we could get virtually every family in town to take a few minutes and write a couple of notes to somebody in the service and say, "Thank you for your service." And all of these just had that short measures message of encouragement. But then, in the meantime, we would also collect items, the non-perishable food, the shampoos, the different things that the men and women in uniform have said they needed. And these two groups pack these up and get them off to the front, wherever these people are serving. We'd also try to collect some money to help pay the postage on those. And I think on a day like that, we can strike a major blow for the environment to get the town cleaned up. And I think when we start the planning, we become so much more conscious. Every time we go down a side street somewhere, when we shudder a little bit by some of the things we see, coming off 95 onto the ramp of 140, either north or south, it is terrible. And I'll bet you that by the evening of May 17, that area is going to look pretty nice. And that's the capability we have to do this within the community. So we also have an opportunity. We want to encourage the volunteers, get them excited about it. And we had an offer. Members of the craft organization will put together a team of their own to get out there on the street picking up litter. They will also encourage other volunteers. They will also do many, many donated items for the men and women in the service. But as volunteers register for this cleanup, they will have an opportunity, put their name and contact information on a card, a ticket, if you will. And as we have the wrap-up of this program, where we serve the box lunches and thank the volunteers and say something on behalf of the men and women in uniform, we can also reach into the jar and pull out one of those tickets. And whoever had their name on that ticket would trade that in for two tickets to a Patriots game with VIP parking. They'd have a tailgate party under the big bubble and sideline visit prior to the game. So I think we're going to have, well, we had over 200 volunteers last year on short notice. I think we're going to do a lot. You're going to have enough T-shirts?
Yeah, it's a lot of T-shirts, A.J.
Yes, last year, I think we had just under 200 people. We put it together in 28 days. We picked up over 750 bags of trash that totaled up over five tons of trash that we took off the streets of Foxborough. We never touched Route 1. We never touched any of the areas coming off of the highways. This year, we're going to conquer all of those. We're going to do all of Route 1. We're going to do all of the roadways coming off. We're going to hit everywhere. We're going to hit everywhere in the town. And, you know, every, I think everything, I think everything will double. I think we could have 400 people. I think we can take 10 tons of trash and clean things up and do a real good thing for the service people and get them the things that they need and the, I think it will be a really good thing for the town.
You had mentioned that you have a method to eradicate graffiti. Did I read that right?
Something that I mentioned, that if, you know, if people came up with ideas or certain spots in town that needed stuff like that, there's no question that we could do that stuff, that we could, we can make different things look better if there's certain areas that are even in the woods that have been neglected for a while.
That we have to pass on, for example.
Yeah, absolutely. If those spots are told to us and were identified with 400 people, I mean, it's amazing what will get done. I mean, we got a lot done last year in a short amount of time.
With a little more time for planning, we can work that in. And that's one of the benefits O.K. said about getting the early start. So, and even if conservation identified an area or anything pointed out that needed special attention, that we have the time and I just think that whatever the need, we're going to find somebody to fill it.
Last year, we did it in June, so there was already a lot of overgrowth. This year, we're going to do it in April before there's the overgrowth. So we're going to be able to get into more spots in, I mean, May, I'm sorry. May 17.
There'll still be snow in April, so.
There will still be snow in April. I meant May. May 17. So, yes, we're going to be able to get all this, a lot of the stuff that we weren't able to get last year as well.
But one of the things that pleased me so much last year, one of the, probably one of the worst spots downtown, right on the main drag, was in between Hair Studio Plus and Car of Insurance. There was that little area, and the buildings came together about that far apart down the end. And that was like a wind tunnel coming up out of the parking lot. And the debris that collected there was unbelievable. So we were real anxious to get in there and get it all cleaned out, and we did. But it presented the germ of an idea. So Ray McKay of Sunlight Farm wanted to do something a little beyond our cleaning up. He called for help. He got Arthur Kelly at Willow Grove. He got Buddy Brackett at Brackett Nursery. He got Andy Felix at Tree Tech. They went in, they took down the tree, they blocked the wind tunnel, planted shrubs, beautiful curved walkway going to a lovely bench. And that is just somebody's reaction. Number one, Dooley's reaction to the pictures in the paper that got the drive going in the first place. But then the reaction of other business people that said, "Hey, this could be even better than what we did." And I think this is the kind of thing that this encourages in the community. So what we need is your blessing to do this on May 17 with all of the same safeguards. The common is in use. So we will go elsewhere for our closing ceremony, somewhere very close to the center, but preferably won't be all those people having to cross the street in the center of town anyway. So we would do that somewhere else. But for the box lunches and the potter parties and stuff, we would all have the permits and the Board of Health approval, everything that was acquired, everything that we had last year plus. And if we could get that from you, we're already working diligently with the Hero Helpers and the Hard Artillery Group to make sure that we're in consort with them as to what the people in uniform want, how we're going to get it to them. And we'd also welcome financial donations to them to help pay for it all. So that's where we're at on this greatly expanded cleanup day. But the core thing here is Dooley and the routes and the mechanics of getting our people out there and picking all the trash up after, and we're ready to roll.
James, any?
No. Other than, you know, a big thank you, it was, you know, on short notice last year, it was a tremendous success. You saw people coming out as individuals, groups, putting people together that haven't worked together before. Tons of kids, they got community service points which went to their school. And I know you were out there with your staff and your equipment and gasoline and, you know, it's nice when one or two people come together with an idea and then you finish it and you say, "You're going to come back and make it a yearly event." And you came back and I can see this going on and on for years. And it does make a tremendous difference.
Yeah, it was good. A lot of the, a lot of the high school students actually would show up in my office throughout the year, asking me to sign off on community service stuff for them and National Honor Society stuff. And so the kids, you know, they did what they needed to do, and it was good for them.
Yeah, and I tell you, they had a good time and it was a good mix of businesses, you know, giving the food and time and energy, so.
I think a lot of people went home feeling very good about that day.
Other than the poison ivy, other than that, it was good.
That's why we're doing it early.
Now, to sign up, do you do that ahead of time or just show up?
Sign up.
Sign up so there'd be a way to?
Yeah, we'll get some information out. I'm not sure exactly how we'll do it, but we'll definitely get some information out.
Have a webpage.
There's a webpage.
And groups can register, individuals, neighborhood groups, whatever.
Go on and register, fill out your shirt size and all that, and then we, then we'll have a meeting point, and then we disperse the people throughout the town.
Super.
And usually, our sign up, we do in the, in the town hall parking lot, if that's all right.
Ginny, you ready?
Oh, no, I think it's a great community organization, and you're building success upon success.
Thank you.
So congratulations, and I look forward to it.
Thank you. Ryan, you ready?
Just thank you very much for what you're doing and just morphing it into, taking it to this next level is amazing. And I think especially recognizing our service people is, really puts a wonderful spin to it, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything you ask from the community other than that? Is there, is there anywhere anybody else can help out financially or donation-wise?
Yeah, we'll get that all in the paper. We need, of course, the Hero Helpers and that group, they need donations for mail. There will be an outreach to business sponsors, provided the disposable gloves, the trash bags, the bottled water, those things. So we'll be contacting people for that.
Okay. So you need a motion from the board?
I've got a motion.
Okay.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen designate May 17, 2014, as Foxborough's Townwide Cleanup.
Isn't it 17?
May 17.
May 17.
May 17, yeah. With special thanks to Jack Orthellet and Dooley Disposal Services for spearheading this for a second time and organizing it, and we wish you luck. And if you find a sandblaster, I'm your volunteer.
All right.
Second.
I got one you can use, John.
Yeah?
Okay, all those in favor? All right. Thank you very much.
We thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay. Chief O'Leary, it's five minutes early, is that okay?
That's okay with me. I commend you on your timeliness on your agenda tonight. Starting right off, good. I had sent a memo to the board last week. I had been contacted by the police chief in Mansfield, and I know that Chief Hatfield had received contact from the fire chief. Mansfield is joining with several other communities in evaluating a regional dispatch center. As the board's aware, last fall, I provided the board with an update of a study that we had done with another group of towns, Walpole, Norwood, and Medfield. And unfortunately, due to circumstances, several of those towns, upon the completion of the study, opted not to pursue it any further. This is an opportunity for us to look and assess with another group of communities whether a regional effort would be beneficial to the community. More and more, the statewide E-911 system is looking for all communities in the Commonwealth to belong to regional groups due to a reduction in expenses for the communities as well as enhancing the services that the communities receive. As this venture would not cost us anything to participate in the grant, I made a leap of faith and sent a letter today so that the group could include us in the effort as we're under a tight timeframe to have the grant submitted. Chief Sullen from the Mansfield Police is actually taking care of the paperwork for the grant. And as noted in the memo, both Norton, Easton, and the city of Attleboro would be joining us in this effort. It should be fairly easy for whatever consultant is picked because we have the most recent data as a result of the work done during the spring of 2013.
Okay. Any questions, John?
No. Chief, the last time you went through this exercise, it looked promising for a while, and then it sort of fizzled. And I can't remember if that was an economic reason, some towns would have to contribute more, and they just said, "Look, it's going to cost us more than we thought."
I think it was just as a result of having the study in hand, some of the communities realized that it wasn't necessarily going to reduce costs, and they had questions whether politically they could have community support for making the change to a regional effort. Again, it's part of a salesmanship that I think that if we decide to join this new group and the study comes out to show that there would be a benefit in improved service for all the communities involved, we would probably have to do sort of a marketing campaign with our own residents to make them realize that even though the call's not being received directly at the Public Safety Building, that they're still going to receive exceptional service and that the same people, whether it's Foxborough firefighters or Foxborough police officers, will be responding to their homes for that service to be provided.
I know this is a trend, Chief, but have any other communities in the Commonwealth joined together to have a regional dispatch that's up and running and is successful?
There are actually, the Hingham area involving Situate and I believe Norwell and Hingham have an operating center that's been developed and is up and running. I know that several of the Cape communities are in the process of finishing a study to evaluate joining together to provide services. And some of the communities down the Cape are utilizing the Barnstable County Sheriff's Office as a call point for the emergency medical dispatch. The towns next to us in terms of the King Philip towns of Norfolk, Rentham, and Plainville are in the process of actually building out a center, and I believe they're going to be joined by the town of Franklin.
Anything else, John?
No, that's, this gives me hope that this will materialize.
Ryan, any questions?
Ed, so do you think this combination of towns, from what you've learned so far, would lend potentially more towards this being successful?
Well, this commonality for us in Mansfield, even though we're rivals in our high school sports, there's a lot of similarity between our communities. They have the Comcast Center. We have, of course, Gillette Stadium. So their policing staff is used to dealing with crowds. Norton abuts the Comcast Center, and we have officers from Norton supporting our policing operations as part of our police reserve. So I think for those core towns, and certainly Easton abuts Norton in Mansfield and is close to us, so I think there's great opportunity. Certainly, Attleboro is interested in it, and they want more information. But at the same time, the other communities have a lot in common with Foxborough.
Okay, thank you.
Ginny?
Ed, who makes the final decision on whether the town goes in to a group like this? Is it town meeting or selectmen?
I think the Board of Selectmen would have to take a look at this. If there's commonality between the communities, you have the opportunity to assess the report and see what types of potential costs might be involved in the operating system. If you feel confident with it, then we would get positive votes from each Board of Selectmen that are involved and then to move forward with the proposal. Because the study not only would assess what's going on in each community, but would also sort of paint a picture for us to follow and an outline for the communities if they wanted to participate. So the final, I think, us joining it would come back to the board for your approval as the leaders in the community.
Okay, thank you.
Jim?
Well-presented, and I support it. It is a good idea.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And again, hopefully, I'll be able to update you should we, number one, receive the grant, but more importantly, when a consulting firm is selected to do the study and as the results of the study come out, to provide the board with this information. I do know through secondhand, the Mansfield Town Manager had a conversation with our future town manager, and he was very interested in hearing more about the study. So I had advised Mr. Cutler of this and, you know, to keep him in the loop as well until our new town manager does arrive.
Chief, do you need a motion from us, or is this just informational?
This is just informational for the board to have as we start to move forward with it.
Everybody all set?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, it's still a little before I'll see council here. Why don't we go to a little action, John? We have quite a bit, so.
Little action.
We'll be.
Actions are way down the board.
I've got all the action, I just don't have an action list.
No, I've got, oh, here it is. Okay, the first item is to appoint Dorothy Body to be an election worker reappointment effective 9/1/2014. So I'll rephrase that. I move that we appoint Dorothy C. Body of 22 Carmine Avenue to be an election worker effective 9/1/2014.
Second.
Term expiring 2014.
Term expiring, sorry.
Any discussion?
Effective immediately.
All those in favor?
Yeah.
All right. Okay.
Actually, Bob, you maybe can help me with this. This is a letter. Should I read this letter?
Well, I think what you guys have to decide, you're being asked by the Business and Professional Women of Massachusetts to consider joining them in equal payday rights. And Ginny had raised some questions about this type of a proposal for the board. Ginny may want to raise that, your concerns.
Yeah, I just questioned whether, you know, it's the proper vote for the board to make in regard to like social or political statements. And this is kind of a social or political statement. I mean, I know in the past, we had a letter from, I believe it was the town of Wareham, Wareham, I think, and asking us to support legislation at the State House in regard to including trailers and things as part of affordable housing. But that directly affected the town of Foxborough because if that legislation passed, that would mean that we were actually closer to the, to our 10% that we were required to achieve. But that, like I said, that directly affected Foxborough. But this, I think, you know, and you've got to be really careful when you, when you support things, whether they're political, social, or, because you don't know how other people feel about it. You don't know what the ramifications are. You don't even know what they do with all the things that they collect. So I just, I just am really kind of cautious about putting my name, or the town's approval on, on anything, anything of this nature. So that was, I raised the question with Bob.
Is this typical, that we get requests like this?
Once in a while, like Ginny said, in the fall, we got the one on the trailers. But as she said, that was specific, not, not specific to Foxborough, but Foxborough would benefit by the change in legislation. And so this is more geared to, you know, it's geared for a different social, political aspect.
And I'm not picking on this.
No, no, she's just saying a general.
I'm just saying it's a general thing. I, it's, you have to be really careful about what the town officially supports and approves. So I just think it would be a good policy not to.
I mean, is one of our alternatives just to take it under advisement?
I was going to suggest, I mean, I had the same thoughts. I read into it, and I, it was not warm or cold to it. It just, I just didn't think it belonged in.
It seemed unusual for a local selectmen's board, so.
Okay, advising it is.
Hey, we'll take that under advisement.
Okay, a little more time, John.
Okay. Bob, guide us on this one. This is a similar request by the Dartmouth Board of Selectmen.
Yeah. You know, I think it's a similar thing, and, you know, it's nice to help small businesses and, you know, in fact, we had a gentleman from the Small Business Association in the town clerk's office yesterday, offering assistance to people who come in to start a small business in town, where they have to file a Doing Business As certificate with the town. So he gave us some pamphlets and things to give to them and some contact information. So again, it's nice to help them out, but is that something that the board wants to officially do as a board?
Yeah, I mean, we have a tri-town chamber of commerce.
Yeah.
That can fill that void.
Especially on this one where they're looking for tax breaks and percentages with long-term ramifications. Yeah. Is that something that the board really needs to weigh in?
Under advisement.
Under advisement, is what I would say. Okay. Item number four. This is for a new officer director for Quincy Amusements at Showcase Cinema Deluxe. The.
Joseph L. Norman.
What are you finding on? Hi.
Ah, right, okay. I knew I recognized you.
This is just the change in offices?
Correct, just the change of officers at the home office.
And they list it on Exhibit A?
Correct.
Yeah. That's the third page in.
Anybody have any issues with this? Okay, seeing none, John, entertain a motion.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen accept Joseph L. Norman as the new officer director for Showcase Cinema Deluxe at Patriot Place, effective immediately?
Yes.
I second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we have one more while the gentleman is here.
Okay. And I'll also make a motion that Board of Selectmen accept Joseph L. Norman as a new officer director of Showcase Live LLC, Doing Business at Showcase Live at Patriot Place, effective immediately.
Correct.
Second.
All those in favor? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks for coming.
All right, thanks, guys.
Okay, I don't still see, were you expecting Tony Gelman too?
Correct.
All right, so let's continue with action, John, because I only seem to do look here.
Okay, I'm going to bundle these. This is a, I'll make a motion that the Board of Selectmen appoint William O. Skollins III, William Caspera, Barnett D. Overd, William Greeter, Sharon Wasson, and Lorraine Brew to the Billboard Advisory Committee. This is a reappointment for a term expiring 5/1/2014.
Second. Any discussion?
Under discussion, I kind of lost track on the Billboard issue. The final vote or consideration, is that town meeting or is that Board of Selectmen?
That would be town meeting.
Town meeting, so we're not voting, the Board would not be voting on any specific recommendations.
No, we figure we have about a month left of work to complete the revision of the bylaw. And then once that's completed, then we would bring it forward to review with the Board because this would be an article presented by the Board of Selectmen to the town meeting for approval. So the first step will be to come to the Board and then we would be working with Advisory Committee and bringing it out to the public also.
Okay, any more discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, number 13. I move that the Board of Selectmen appoint James W. Evans Jr. of 35 Stratton Lane to the Industrial Development Finance Authority for a term expiring full 1/2019.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Counsel is here.
So why don't we, it'd take two minutes to finish this, there's not much here, let's finish this up, John.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve baseball, Foxborough Youth Baseball and Softball Association's annual opening day parade to be held on April 12, 2014 from 8:00 to 8:45.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
And I hope it doesn't rain. I don't think I've seen it in years. Has it had it? When was the last time it had it?
Usually does. Cold and rainy.
Okay, John, next.
Okay. Do you want to jump over the minutes?
The minutes might take a while, yeah.
Oh, these are the, okay, yep.
Okay, item number 16 is from Boy Scout Troop Number 7 and they're inviting the Board of Selectmen to attend the Boy Scout Eagle Court of Honor to be held on April 3, 2014 at 7:00 at the Bethany Congregational Church. And this is for Sean O'Heal Jacobs and Connor Kevin Putnam. I'm planning to be there, I don't know if anyone else is planning to be there, but we have citations to be signed, so we'll do that.
It's a Thursday night, so definitely makes it a lot easier to get there, so let's see how many of us can get there. I know we made a couple as a group, or multiple people showing up, so we'll put that. Congratulations to the young scout.
I think they're also asking for an RSVP too.
Yep, so John has done that, I will check.
I haven't RSVP'd yet, but I am planning to be there.
Yep, because definitely everybody can get back to them, that'd be great.
And also, item number 17, again, Boy Scout Troop 7 is inviting us to attend an Eagle Court of Honor on May 29, 2014 at 7:00 at the Bethany Congregational Church. And this is for Thomas Donnelly, whose soon will be our latest Eagle Scout.
Great, yep. And that's the boy that found that money a couple of years ago.
Yeah.
He found like a hundred dollars and returned it to the police as cash, so nice to see him back.
Great, okay.
And I'll look at my schedule to see if I can make that one.
If anybody wants to check that and RSVP, that'd be great, and congratulations to another scout in Foxborough.
Okay, John.
You have a gift.
Okay, I have to, this one, item number 18 is I move that we appoint Edward J. Callahan of 137 East Street to the Veteran Services Advisory Committee for a term expiring May 1, 2014.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, John, number 19.
Okay, M19 is a gift acceptance. And I move that we accept on behalf of the Historical Commission a $5,000 gift for the purpose of the donation is to assist in the funding of the restoration work on the Civil War soldier on top of Foxborough Memorial Hall. And this is given by the Foxborough Historical Society.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, John. Number 20.
How many do we have here?
There's two more.
No, no, we give, this is all going to the Recreation Department.
Oh, gifts, I thought you meant items, articles.
I guess I got to do these one at a time. I move that we accept on behalf of the Recreation Department a gift of $150. The gift has been donated by the Foxborough Youth Lacrosse Registration. And this is to be used as a raffle item at the Rec Department's Sports Sale. And the donor is Foxborough Youth Lacrosse. The event will be Saturday, March 8. And thank you to Foxborough Youth Lacrosse for the donation.
Second.
Discussion? All's in favor? Aye.
I'm going to recuse myself, only my youngest daughter volunteered there and I think she ended up winning a field hockey training session, so.
Okay, all right, so 401.
Okay, I'll just finish these up, Mark.
Yep.
I move that the Board of Selectmen accept on behalf of the Board of Recreation a donation by Foxborough Youth Baseball Association. It says it's worth $65 to $110 and it's to be used as a raffle item at the Rec Department's Sports Sale.
Second.
All's in favor?
No, abstain.
You abstain again, okay. So 401 again?
Okay. I move that we accept on behalf of the Board of Recreation a one-week field hockey camp registration worth $125 to be used as a raffle item at the Recreation Department's Sports Sales and the donor is Melissa Bauderian. Thank you, Melissa, for the donation.
Second.
All's in favor? 401 again?
And lastly, I move the Board of Selectmen accept on behalf of the Board of Recreation a one-week lacrosse camp registration worth $150 to be used as a raffle item for the Recreation Department's Sports Sale and the donor is Foxborough Youth Lacrosse. And again, thank you to Foxborough Youth Lacrosse for the donation.
Second.
All's in favor? 401, once again. Bob, do you want to fill us in on the last action item?
Sure.
A little bit of education, please.
You could see from the date of this letter that it just came in last, the end of last week. It's a request by Southeastern Regional to put a warrant item on the warrant to approve the establishment of a stabilization fund for Southeastern Regional. And apparently they haven't done this before. And the plan is not that it would immediately create a need of the town to give money into the fund, but in the future, they will be looking to set up a stabilization fund like we have for the town of Foxborough for our own budget purposes. So with the fact that you voted to close the warrant at the last meeting, you'd have to vote to open the warrant to include this if you thought it was worthwhile. And it may be something that can be put off to a town meeting vote later in the year. I know, I saw Mr. Yudin is here and he may be able to give you some additional information if he cares to.
Steve, could you come up, please?
Sure. Want name and address?
No.
Fire away, I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can for you.
Was that a good summary of it, Steve?
Yeah, I think it was excellent. The reason that it did come in at the last minute is at the Southeastern Vocational Technical School School Committee meeting.
March 11th.
March 11th, few weeks ago, we voted two-thirds majority to establish this stabilization fund for capital purposes. As many of you probably know, a substantial renovation of the school has just been completed. And we expect to use this, we will be using this fund according to state regulations for capital improvements and like here in Foxborough, increasing our chances for better bonding rates, those sorts of things, it shows a sign of stability. Why it came here at this time, I can explain. There are nine municipalities served by Southeastern Regional Voc Tech, of which Foxborough is one, and we have about 19 students going there right now. Our town is about 1% of the total school population, but we do contribute money for those students to be at that school. In order for this stabilization fund to formally be created, it has moved past stage one, which is the school committee approving it, which we did. And now the participating communities, the nine communities, will be asked by their respective town, forms of town government to approve or disapprove the establishment of this fund by a majority vote, okay? Once that vote, let's say, assume it goes through, the fund will be established and managed according to state law. If it fails, we don't create it. If it passes, we do. But because we have nine communities, they all have different town meeting schedules or town council meetings or the like. So our recommendation here was, and in part, this was mine, is while we have town meeting coming up, I know the warrant was closed, but why not communicate with the town and see if we can, you know, get it in the warrant? It certainly needs to be discussed further if you want to. And tomorrow night at the Advisory Committee, Mark Morris will be presenting the entire school budget for Southeastern Voc Tech, which is about, I think, $23 million right now for this next year. And we can learn more about it then and there as well. But if it goes in the warrant, it can still have more information or, again, as Mr. Cutler said, it can be put off. But timing is a good issue and we're so close to our meeting, it was worth asking respectfully the Board of Selectmen to consider putting it in the warrant.
Well stated.
Mark, I think the better idea probably is you're going to be discussing the warrant in a little bit later in the meeting, that you continue this as part of that discussion. And if you decide to vote to include it in, you can do that at that time.
Steve, how are capital projects handled right now?
Right now, they're handled with the monies that we get from state grants or that we have with E and D excess and funds and, or we have to raise and appropriate the monies, say, for example, right now it's Southeastern Regional, our track needs repair. So do we want to save up the money to repair it or appropriate it presently? So likely, for the track example, the money will be filled in the account and then the track will have repair.
So having this type of, you know, fund will help you, your planning process?
Yes, exactly. And again, the uses are prudent for capital expenditures. Does that answer your question?
No, I mean, it's going to be no additional impact on the towns that participate, it's just that you're going to be directing the monies into a fund which you can accumulate and then dispense for larger projects.
Yes, but I think I'm going to qualify your question if I understand it. There will be or may be additional costs to the burden of the Foxborough compensation to the school because the stabilization fund ask of the communities cannot exceed an aggregate of 5% of the total school budget. But for example, in Foxborough, our contribution would be something along the line of 2% or 3% of what our normal payment to the Fox, to the Southeastern District would be. Does that make sense?
Are we not doing that presently?
We are not because the fund has not yet been established.
Oh, okay. In addition to what we're currently paying.
Right, right. So when I say 5%, I do want to qualify that for anyone that might be paying attention at home to this or be concerned about it, is Foxborough's contribution wouldn't be 5%. The ask of the communities would be 5% of our budget. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And please, if I'm not explaining it clearly, I can restate it for anyone.
Well, I think it's important that we continue the discussion later and I think you're meeting with advisory too tomorrow?
I'll be at the Advisory Committee meeting, yeah.
Steve, are you still a rep for Southeastern?
I am.
You still are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's within the bonds of the ethics and everything still and...
Yeah, I just didn't know when you got elected to school committee, if you had to...
Yeah, originally I planned to step down right away, but right now I'm able to manage both and until impeachment proceedings come along or something, I'll probably be there for a while. Are there any other questions I can ask for anyone?
At this time, for sure.
Now, this is going to go towards the end, he doesn't need to stay around.
Well, you know, I was thinking of that myself too. I mean, I think it's important to put, open the warrant and put it on in lieu of time and why be stuck waiting till October for, you know, it's part of our school district, you know?
That's a discussion you can have in a little bit.
Yeah, so we can reopen it.
Saying he doesn't need to stay here for that discussion.
I think we've got a clear understanding what this is all about.
Yeah, Steve, I'm just wondering, all the other towns, I mean, they're probably up against the wall with their warrants as well, do you know if...
I don't know the exact schedules, but I do know that it's sort of shifting sands right now and that there's not a clear straight line, you know, Community A is this in May and June and July or anything like that, there's no linear...
In the spring, the towns hold their town meetings and their elections. The cities, like Brockton is part of your group, right?
Correct.
So I suspect that they have their elections and things in the fall.
Mm-hmm.
Because cities have their elections in the fall, but the towns are all in the spring and they start anywhere from, you know, beginning of April through June.
Marge to June, yeah.
Now, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I've been on other committees here in the town and I'm not one of those people in favor of hearing and then voting. I have no problem with this marinating and going through a thought process or some due diligence that the BOS or any other groups in town may want to do or paid officials, you know, administration. So this is an appeal to please rush this into the warrant. This is more of if it's convenient and proper and prudent for the Board, then it would be nice if it goes ahead and if we have to put it off and learn more about it or get a better understanding as a town or certain groups, then so be it.
I think this is one of those articles where we'll educate ourselves through you, but I think AdCom's where you're going to really have to do your education process because they're the ones that are going to, you know, give a vote to town meeting if it gets there, so.
But Steve, we're up against the wall as far as getting warrants to printers such, so, you know, I think if we can do it tonight, there might not be another opportunity.
I know it's really tight, yeah. We know it's really tight, so if it gets pushed off, it does, and it will be for, you know, a good reason.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there anything else?
Any other questions while he's here? Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, let's go back to our 7:30 agenda. Counsel, please come forward. Welcome. I think we need a couple other seats. Thank you, Mr. DeLuca.
Yeah, thanks, Mike. So we're here tonight to update the Board on the progress of the several documents that are going to be included in the two licenses for Splitsville. I'll be addressing the settlement agreement. Cindy will talk to the entertainment license and Dave will talk to the liquor license. Chief O'Leary is here and Bill Caspera is here if you need to ask any of them any questions. Where we are in terms of the processes that we have, I have been negotiating the terms of the settlement agreement with Jim Cobry. During the course of that, it became clear to us that we needed to have completed the provisions of the community policing plan. The chief has been working on that with the stadium, but that community policing plan will not be completed until about the end of the month. I did not think the Board would want to approve the settlement agreement without actually seeing the actual policing plan, and so we're going to wait for that. The process on that has, I talked to the chief about it, I met on Friday with Randy Skollins and the chief, so that's moving along. The other document that's going to be attached to the settlement agreement... The other document that's gonna be attached to the settlement agreement is a, the specifications for the police substation. Those haven't been completed, nor have they complete, Eddie can talk to this more, but in terms of equipment and replacement, some of the business deal has yet to be finalized, so Eddie will talk about it. So, with both of those not completed, our purpose tonight is to just bring you up to date on where we are in terms of those several documents. I did get today, or yesterday, some questions from the board, members of the board, and during the course of my discussion of the settlement agreement, will address those questions. Cindy will address the entertainment license, and Dave the liquor license. So, with that. The police substation, the, these are agreements that stadium people have agreed to, it, the entity that we're dealing with is NPP. That's the entity that pays about, I'm told, Randy's checking this out, about two million dollars in taxes to the town. But they will, they'll construct, furnish, outfit, and equip a substation at a location that they've already figured out with Eddie. And by equip, they'll be in the substation specifications, exactly what it is we're getting. The radios that they will equip the police with will be provided in the first place by NPP, and then the business agreement is that replacements will be done by the town. The other equipment that will be housed in the substation will be initially provided by NPP, and the parties, Eddie and his counterpart are talking about the business agreement as to who will pay for the cost of replacement of those items, so that is not yet worked out. The substation can be relocated, but only with the agreement of both parties, so any, any relocation has to be agreed to by the chief. The question came up, when it gets relocated, what's gonna be the nature of the substation? And since it requires our approval at the time, I think it's best to wait until then if it happens. It may, if we simply said it'll be what we have now, that may be inadequate, you just don't know. And so, I'm comfortable with the provision that says the relocation requires the agreement of both parties. That is the, the police substation. They've also agreed to pay for the personnel costs required for command officer or officers, all details, and the additional cost of four hours for a police wagon as part of the community policing plan. That's the document that hasn't yet been completed, but, but the concept to which they've agreed is that they will pay the full cost of that annually, and the parties recognize that that cost will vary, likely go up every year, but the commitment is to pay that full cost as it increases from year to year. The stadium asked for a cap on that amount, I've told them that would not be acceptable, but we, what we will do is explain to them how the amounts are calculated, and at the end of the day, the chief has the authority to require whatever police personnel he requires, and so, that's, that's the way that will work. But I don't have more specifics on that, because we don't have the plan. One of the open items on the community policing plan provision is how we bill for the cost, and how it gets paid. I've been working with Randy on that issue, and I, I've asked him to get in touch with the person at the stadium that's talking to Jim about it, because it seems to be beyond my ability and Jim's ability to figure out exactly how that's gonna work, so we'll let the two.
If I could add in, Brian Early from NPP, I'm, I'm that person, and, you know, we're prepared to, to work with the town on the billing process for the community policing to the licensees, spread out based on a formula, so, you know, whatever that number ends up being, and that, whether it's a cap number, or the number that's been proposed by the chief, actually, he did propose a, a number for what he felt was the adequate policing component, you know, we can figure out how to divvy that up, so that the town can properly bill directly to each of the licensees at Patriot Place.
In any event, I told Randy today that whatever we come up with in terms of how the, the payments will be made, I'll work with him and run it by him, and certainly rely on, on Randy's expertise as to how he wants payments made and attributed to the, to the budget. The, there'll be a provision in the settlement agreement that says that a breach of any of the conditions of the licenses of, of either of the licenses will be a breach of the settlement agreement, and a breach of the settlement agreement will be a breach of a, of a condition of the license, so that one of the methods of enforcement that you'll have, if there's a breach of this, of the settlement agreement, will be to take action on the liquor license and the entertainment license. The memorandum of agreement of two thousand and seven, that's the agreement that provides the hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for another four years, I think, that is unaffected, and by that, I mean, those payments will continue until they're provided for termination in, I think it's four years, but whatever it is, we're not changing that agreement.
That's five years.
I'm sorry? Five years, okay, whatever it is. The, the, NPP will pay for the cost of one additional police officer, beginning when Splitsville either opens or receives a occupancy certificate, whichever occurs sooner, they will begin to pay us on a monthly basis for the cost of one additional police officer. We have agreed that the cost, first-year cost for the officer is, is a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. They understand that this is the requirement to pay for the police officer, so we'll continue for so long as there is a police presence needed at Patriot Place. So, that's as long as that place is open, yes, Jenny?
I just had a question. It's one police officer, and is that based on the, like, COF report, and the plan that Chief O'Leary spoke about, that where he needed thirty-five police officers, and is that based on the two thousand and seven?
The cost of it?
The number.
No, the number.
The number of one police officer?
One additional police, Chief O'Leary, maybe you can answer that? Is that, we're talking about one additional police officer?
That's correct.
Okay, is that ba, does that bring the force up to thirty-five? Is that the number?
That's correct. That was the number that I feel is sufficient for the community, based on the development at Patriot Place.
As of now, or is that what you thought in two thousand and seven?
Well, certainly, in two thousand and seven, we weren't looking at developments as they have happened, because we're in a different economy. However, given the new model that the stadiums create to pay for, for the community policing plan, I believe that thirty-five is the appropriate number for our community.
Okay, as of, as of now, with the number with...
Even with changes that I'm aware of coming down the road, you know, to be a sufficient staffing level, make sure that we're providing services to an area that's having growth, while at the same time maintaining services for the rest of the community.
Yeah, okay. And is that also, that's something that could be looked at again, like, four or five years down the road, to maybe, you know, by that time, we'll have a track record to see if maybe there could be an adjustment?
There's nothing in this agreement that would require them to pay for an additional police officer, except to the extent that the chief determines that more details are needed for policing Patriot Place. So, not to confuse the things, the community policing plan itself is going to vary in cost, depending upon the number of venues which have liquor licenses and entertainment licenses, and we're gonna put this in the agreement, depending upon the, the nature of the events, the number of the events, the length of the events, the, when they begin, when they end, what the experience is, is it peaceful, or has something really bad happened that requires more police? That, so it may be that, that more detail work is needed up there, that is covered by the agreement, but this one additional police officer is one additional police officer. What will vary, Jenny, is the cost for that officer. The one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is the cost that Randy calculated, including all of the fringe benefits, including one-sixth of a vehicle. The reason it's, it's, it's two persons to a vehicle, and a vehicle ends last three years, so it's one-half or one-third, which is one-sixth, but all of those costs are built in there, and that's the cost schedule that we'll be using go forward as that dollar amount changes.
Okay, so, so the, yes, we're adding one police officer, but the details are not being capped? It's just as many details as the, the chief feels, you know, down, you know, necessary down the road? Okay, that's all set. Thank you.
Any other questions on that?
Quick, so, again, I just wanted to clarify, on the community policing plan, that that is detail, or that that cost will be of a detail nature?
You mean, detailed agreement, or you're talking about police details?
Police details.
Yeah, it will cover the cost of details, is that, yes, it will, it will cover the cost of details, the cost of the command officers, and the additional use of the wagon. All, it's all gonna be spelled...
So, all of them are details?
I'm sorry?
The command officers are also details?
You know, I haven't made that distinction, they'll be paid for, whether they're part of the, I don't think of them in terms of a detail, someone who's patrolling the premises of the venue, Eddie can talk to him better than I, but that's a person that's gonna be in the substation, as I understand it. That's a detail, it's fine, but it'll all be paid for by NPP and all their tenants. And the payments will be, to the extent that the tenants are required to make payments, they will be, those payments are guaranteed by NPP, will be guaranteed by NPP. Mark, also, I'm not, I'm happy to take questions, I just haven't finished, but I can take questions and then finish.
Well, I, I think as you go, it might be a little easier, instead of trying to re-educate everybody on the question that they're even talking about, and moving back and forth, so...
Well, I think that's right, that's a really good idea.
So, John, anything to add to that, any questions yet?
Just going back to that detail, there's different funding mechanisms for that, so if it was a detail, it would be, you know, reimbursed to the town, the town would pay them first. If it wasn't a detail, it would come through the operating funds of the police department.
Right, John, and those...
We just need to know how it's gonna be structured.
Right, and, and those are the issues that I said I have to, I've been working with Randy on, and until, and until we know exactly what the plan is, I'm having a little difficulty...
Okay, so these details are gonna show up in the community policing component?
Yeah, well, and I, and I will rely primarily on Randy about that, yes.
James, anything there?
Where it's, I mean, it's kinda defined, "The cost of such officers shall include salary, benefits, equipment, anticipated retirement benefits, such portion of police vehicles." I mean, those are the number, the numbers are gonna come back to support that, but what's in the agreement kinda summarizes...
Yes.
Regardless if it's a detail or a full-time officer.
No, you're, you're mixing up the payment for the full-time officer, that's separate and apart, it's got nothing to do with details.
Yeah, that's under five.
It's under additional police officer, but that's separate from the...
Yes, separate from the detail.
Okay.
All right. The, there, we're having some lawyer talk over what the town can do in the event of a default, failure to pay. It's still working that out with, with Mr. Cobry, but the payer is an entity who gets licensed, and under state statute that we've adopted, if there's a failure to pay, we can revoke, suspend licenses. Failure to pay would be a breach of the liquor license, the entertainment license, and I'm adding things to that, so, but we're still negotiating, negotiating out the terms of our remedies in the event of a default. And a default, by the way, by a tenant will be a default by NPP because of the guarantee provisions that we have in there. The fieldhouse licenses, because of the way this is being resolved, the fieldhouse license is gonna be transferred, and there will be no fieldhouse license. They were concerned that, in the past, they've had ten or twelve events at the fieldhouse. Because I can't commit the board to pre-approve a license application, that's not the way licenses work, I do have a provision in here that says that you'll consider the same issues that you've considered in the past when looking at a fieldhouse license, but I can't say that you've granted or not granted, you don't know, you don't have the application. I would suspect that you'd be satisfied to just look at the same criteria that you've always looked at for a fieldhouse license.
Wasn't there a number, Dick, of twelve per year? I thought it was a higher number.
Twelve per year.
A long time ago, it was thirty-five.
Yeah, it was thirty.
They have other event, they had other events, other than the games, the twelve would cover games specifically.
Yeah, there would be additional events that could come in, as private events that are, that are beyond the, the game events, either the revs or football. What that number is, we didn't, you know, is year to year, we don't know.
Yeah, right, you don't know.
The question I had on that, Dick, that I sent you, I just wanted to, I think I know what the answer is, but, "Under fieldhouse licenses, you know, the twelve licenses, such considerations shall be generally as the board has previously considered when granting annual licenses for the fieldhouse." Now, usually, the one-day licenses are usually for beer and wine, right? So, does this give, does this give them the, the ability to have all alcohol? Because when we had, when it had the fieldhouse license before, it was all alcohol.
Would that be better answered by Mr. DeLuca?
Yeah, there is, you know, it's, it's kind of a quirk in the statute, where one-day licenses are permissible for beer and wine for, for profit, but not-for-profit, my memory is not-for-profit, you can issue a one-day...
All alcohol.
All alcohol. So, yeah, I think we're, you know, and by the way, it's, this, by statute, thirty per year, they're permissible.
Right.
Up to thirty per year.
The thirty number, I thought.
Yeah, up to thirty per year. So, there may need, may need to be some form of reorganization, if you will, of the applicant, depending upon how the applicant is presented to you, as a for-profit, not-for-profit entity may actually govern whether, to what extent, you can issue all alcohol versus beer and wine.
So, as I read it, it was giving them all alcohol, because they used to have all alcohol under that.
Well, I, I'm not sure that it says exactly that, it just, I, I think the intent of that...
Well, it can be interpreted that way.
Yeah, the, the intent, I think, is...
That is what they want, Jenny, all alcohol.
Yeah, then, then it may be necessary for...
They have one of those, they have a not-for-profit.
They have a not-for-profit, okay, well, depending on who the applicant is.
Okay.
And I think the intent of the provision is that you'd be considered...
Well, the thing is, I don't want, I don't want some other entity to come back and say, hey, wait a minute, you're giving, how come you're, you know, how come you're letting them, if it's a, in case it's a nonprofit, applying for it, how come you're giving them a non, all alcohol, non, if it's a not, if it's not a nonprofit, when you're saying, I have to, I have, I have to be a nonprofit to get, you know, I want, you know, I want everybody to be treated the same.
So, I think Dave has just addressed that, it has to be a not-for-profit. I don't suspect that's gonna be a problem for the stadium to have a not-for-profit entity.
Okay, all right, I mean, just, I just want everybody to be on the same playing field, you know, I don't want any problems down the road, you know?
Thank you. So, that's where, in terms of timing, Ed thinks that he can get the community policing plan completed by the end of the month. Once that's done, I'll pop it into this agreement. By then, we'll have worked out with Randy and the stadium, how the detailed payments would, would be attributed to our budget, we'll take it all back to you again for consideration.
John, any questions?
Yeah, this afternoon, we talked about definition of a holiday. Is that all worked out?
Yeah.
Because it was two holidays that are...
Because it was two holidays that are actually legal holidays in the Commonwealth, one is Bunker Hill Day, the other is Evacuation Day.
Those are in Boston.
Only Suffolk County.
Yeah, I mean, we-
And if you look at the draft of the license I gave you tonight, those two are not in it.
Okay.
But I think, John, to be clear, I don't think we've, we've discussed that with the stadium yet, I mean, I saw your, your inquiry came in late today, we haven't. This is the way we think it would work, but we haven't talked to the stadium and they haven't talked to Spitzville.
I just wanted to point that out, that they, you know, when you say all legal holidays in the Commonwealth, those, those two are Suffolk County only.
Could you have the holidays itemized on the-
I did in the draft I sent out tonight.
Well, that got, came up to six o'clock tonight, right?
And I handed it to you tonight, yes.
Yeah, we haven't had a chance to read it, so we're going on explanation, yeah.
It is in there and it will be.
Yeah, we can review that, but not live on camera, so.
The other item I want to talk about, and this is, struck me as, it's odd and unverifiable, is item number five about sound levels. And we have no baseline decibels, and it basically says that the sound levels will be the same as other Spitzville locations during comfortable times, I mean, completely unverifiable. Why is that in there? Is there a reason?
Why is the sound limit-
Why is this, why is item number five in there? I know it's in there to say we're not going to be terribly loud, but, but-
There is a sound ordinance in this, in the town. Was it 97 decibels, Bill?
It's in their conditions.
In, in, in any event, John, you know, thank you for-
So, is that how we're going to verify it?
No, 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 with, you know, the process here, John, and thank you for it, is to get things out to the board and to get your comments, which are well-received.
Yeah, I sent this one in today as well.
No, no, you didn't, thank you for that. We'll, I know Cindy's already talked to Bill Caspera, and we'll address it, the next iteration you get of the entertainment license will be more specific in terms of what decibels may be permitted and whatnot. You might, if we did nothing further with the provision as it's drafted, I'm not saying that, I just want to point out to you that if it's really loud, there is, there is a standard against which we go, which is you go look at another Holiday Moon, you do the reading, and you come back and you say, "This is too loud." I get that, may not be the best way to do it. We could put in a standard now as to what the sound level is for existing Holiday Moons. You have to then compare that to the, whatever the clause is.
The, the ability for this town to verify it is beyond reasonable. We can't travel to other Spitzvilles and measure decibels.
No, we, no, that's right, John, and I guess there's one of those, but fine, no problem there, we'll, we'll put some kind of-
Just the way it's written was somewhat, well, I think was extremely vague.
It, it may be helpful to, you know, make it consistent across other venues, whether in the town or specifically at Patriot Place. We have between Toby Keith and Showcase Live, obviously, there's sound decibels that, you know, penetrate out, they don't seem to interfere with anything today, so maybe that's a consistent way to approach it.
No, I'm just looking for clarification, it was just extremely vague.
Cindy, do you have something to add?
I was going to say, that was the, that was a condition that was part of the application that they suggested, and we kept it in, and this afternoon, no one had questioned anything about it. And then when your comments came in, I reached out to Bill Caspera, and I know he has responded briefly to me, but I, because of the time, I have not had a chance to really review what Bill had said. If you want to tell everyone what you told me, that'd be great.
You can probably work out with him.
If you're going to tighten it up, that's fine. But to the, to the, you know, anyone reading this would have said, "It's just a bunch of fluff."
No, it was, it was, the reason why it was written that way is it was brought up as a condition in prior hearings, that's why it was brought up that way.
Mr. Caspera, welcome.
I'm sitting quietly over there, like it sucked in like it was a black hole. Here goes. What I did send to Cindy was, we do have a general bible on disturbances, and let's see, Article Five, police regu, it's a police regulation, and it does address excessive loud noises from a band, music, from a radio, et cetera. But it's a very broad brush, as you pointed out, John, it doesn't refer to any decibel criteria. It says if it's audible from a distance of 150 feet from the point of origin, you know, if it's audible, it's, if I hear it, it's, it's a nuisance. When I do concerts, I rely on 310 CMR, because that, they define noise pollution, and what, Mark, you were referring to, decibels. So, I use that as guidance when I go out. I get a complaint, and I'll go out to the point of complaint and see if it's 10 decibels over the background for 10 minutes. If it is, we tell Keith, Mick Jagger to turn it down. But anyway, we do not have a specific noise ordinance in this town, so I don't know how you'd enforce that.
That was my question.
I don't know how you would do that.
It was there for a reason, and it obviously speaks to some kind of enforcement, I just, there's nothing there.
It's self-regulating, because if you go to a place that's got loud music and you can't talk, what do you do? You leave. Or you don't like the music, you leave, so I don't know if that's a big issue.
I just, it may not, I just wonder why it's there. It may have been a holdover from the application, but again, it really doesn't have any metal to it.
Do you want to extract it, John?
I'd leave it there, I just, I was questioning, was there anything more to it?
I don't know anything other than what was I, I've heard today, so.
All right, let's move on. Go through the entertainment.
The entertainment license is pretty much the same as the version you saw before. There were a few comments from both conversations with the stadium and from some of the board's selectmen, they were not particularly major for the most part. In number three, the, we included that the maximum legal capacity, occupancy capacity of the premises is 900. We confirmed that number with Bill Caspera, and kept the substance of the condition, which is that the occupancy will not be any greater than 800, which is what the board required. Similarly, on the legal occupancy capacity for the live entertainment area, we looked at what was legally allowed, and the maximum was 514. Again, we verified that with Bill Caspera. And most importantly is the entertainment license condition that limits it to 400 persons, unless for some weird reason they reconfigure it and the building capacity is less than that. So, the institution of what the legal occupancy for those two areas was included, but the important thing, which is the restrictions the board imposed at the last meeting, has not changed. We just talked about the sound decibels. On the sixth entertainment condition, we just parroted what was in the application, which is that they will have no drink menus, drink specials, or other food and beverage promotions that will refer to Howl at the Moon. That was what the application said they would be willing to do, and that's really the substance of what the board-
Cindy, will there be a sign outside that says Howl at the Moon? Or is this simply just going to be Howl at the Moon entertainers?
I believe the signs, although we haven't seen them, when Jim was here at the previous hearings, they talked about there being some sign saying Howl at the Moon Entertainment, but that it would be a Spitzville sign with reference to Howl at the Moon Entertainment. If the board has substantive changes or comments on this particular condition, I'm more than happy to, you know, take comments, but I have not heard any from anyone to date. So, I'm happy to take them in.
No, exactly, I'll go back through the literature just to see if that was there.
Okay.
I didn't happen to see one.
What we did add to was, and it looks longer than it really is, just because they happened to be two things that came up in one, and that's item number seven, that talks about Howl at the Moon Entertainment. What we essentially did was define holiday periods to include the legal holidays celebrated in the Commonwealth, and we listed them, and they would be New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, Washington's birthday, Patriots' Day, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Columbus Day, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. And if, for whatever reason, we had inadvertently included Evacuation Day, or I forget, Bunker Hill Day, they are only celebrated in Suffolk County, so they would not be applicable in here anyway.
Cindy, if I could interrupt, I actually did a, made a calendar of all the events and all the holidays and all the Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays, and it came up, this is just for everyone's knowledge, it's approximately 184 days out of the calendar year that the Howl at the Moon entertainers can be open to public. Just so everyone knows, it's, it's, it's a pretty substantial number.
That's, but that's holidays, those legal holidays?
Those are the day before and the day after a legal holiday. Those are all the stadium events, those are the Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, the football games on Sundays, there's some, there's one Revolution game, I think, in the middle of the week, there's concerts. All of those things qualify as a stadium event, which then you start to say the Thursday, Friday, Saturday is the root of it, but then it builds off of that. So, it's 100, I've got roughly 184 days in a calendar year.
Did you extract the ones that would end up on a Thursday?
Yeah, those, those are, those are, I mean, any duplicates were only counted as one.
And I believe that this provision would allow events to occur, but not necessarily that they would for all of the different venues. So, what you're looking at is a-
Yeah, these are either an event, a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, an event, or a holiday day before, day of.
Right, so they could, they could be operating, correct.
And I get approximately 184 days, but the Patriots' schedule isn't out yet, so I, I just extrapolated a normal schedule.
Okay.
Just, that's just information.
Yep. And I have no idea if their practice would be to actually operate on all of the holidays or only certain ones, but if, if that's the map, that's great.
Yeah, I guess this is, you could call this potential.
Right.
The holidays will be listed on the agreement, correct?
Yes, I did spell them out in there.
That's a very important thing.
And also, a question was raised for a definition of a stadium event day, so we actually put in the definition that was in the lease itself, and that basically is, "A stadium event day shall mean any day where any event for which tickets are sold, admission charged, or any other form of payment or remuneration is charged for the use of the stadium is held. In addition to that, in the case of events which are held both within and without the stadium itself, those events which are held 50% or more, measured in gross area used in the stadium, shall be considered stadium events." And that's from-
The lease agreement.
The lease, yep.
Anybody have an issue?
No.
Okay, that's on the set.
I just have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
Going back to the community policing plan, we had talked about Chief O'Leary having access to a consultant to help develop that.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, they will pay for that.
So, I think I heard earlier that the expectation is that Ed will have this plan together within the next few weeks, so I'm, what I'm wondering is if we're trying to put too much, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Eddie-
I just feel like, you know, the concept of community policing is important, the agreement to support the consultant will make that happen. I wouldn't want to slow down this agreement by having Ed, under pressure, to develop this plan without having had the time to be able to spend and have input from him and his staff with a consultant.
I mean, could you, could you say that you would not want to slow down the approval process?
Because you said earlier that this part isn't done yet, the community policing plan isn't done, and we're not, you were suggesting that we shouldn't sign this agreement?
Well, no, actually, in deference to the board, I presumed that the board would prefer to have the plan done before you approve the settlement agreement. That, that was my presumption, if the board feels otherwise, we can certainly get the settlement agreement done with the exhibit to be attached.
Why don't we have that discussion, since we're done with the entertainment version of the license? I think it's a good point.
Are you going to hear from Ed first?
Well, we could either do it two different ways, Mr. Chairman. I know that counsel is presenting the entertainment license, and I know Mr. DeLuca wants to talk about the liquor transfer. I think on the agenda Mr. Galvin presented to me earlier today, I would be sort of the closer and discuss some of the issues that have been brought up in these different discussions as to how we'd accomplish moving forward with this project.
Okay, back to you, Cindy.
The rest of the conditions have not changed particularly. We have the restriction that no one under the age of 21 should be permitted to sit at the high-top tables when Howl at the Moon Entertainment's offered, or be in the area except in connection with a, a private event or an adult. I don't even think it's an adult, only in a private event. The live entertainment area, admission to that area is going to be regulated using best practices and in conjunction with recommendations made by the police chief. We, instead of limiting it to bracelets, like, or conciers like we had before, we've expanded the language and specifically made it dependent on what the police chief thinks is the best way to go. The initial manager of the licensed facilities will be Dan Glaberson, a Spitzville employee. We instituted, we put in his name now that we have it. Howl at the Moon Entertainment, other than in paragraph seven, will not be available on any night other than as previously set forth without approval of a town one-day entertainment license. So, outside of that potential 184 days, couldn't have Howl unless there was a one-day entertainment license for someone who couldn't-
So, all private events are going to need a one-day entertainment license?
I would believe that all private events are going to need a one-day entertainment license, just by virtue of them being private events.
Okay, I, actually, I was only understanding that they declared it private, therefore it was okay, so if that's the case, that's fine.
I, I was under the impression that a private event would not be stipulated by one day. I mean, the, any public, open to the public event beyond the day stipulated would require that, but I don't think it was intended for a private event to require the, the single day.
Is there a label? Well, that's what I, I was under the impression on private-
Because if there's no one-day license necessary, potentially, you could be open year-round if you're booking with private events.
Private events, though, can happen at any day. A private event can't, doesn't necessarily have to be tied to a stadium event day or a holiday.
Correct, yeah.
It can be at any time.
Do you want to limit the number, John? Is that a concern?
No, I'm an advocate if, for a one-day license.
For, for every private event that they want to have, that was not stipulated in any.
Okay, then we have some confusion.
Well, realistically, John, how many private, if they're not going to be open to the public, what's the point of having them? It just doesn't make any sense. I think it's going to be few and far between, and maybe you have a better idea of that.
Well, I mean, we don't know, I mean, they, they do private events in their other Spitzvilles, but I think just the process of going in for a, you know, in front of the board for an, for a one-day entertainment license, when they have an entertainment license for a private event, it seems redundant and, you know, burdensome to, to everyone.
I mean, most private events, I would say, were not very large. I would think, from what I will understand, they would be some of the size of 30 people, team-building event, from what I've, I've been seeing in the presentations. Some of them can be larger, but most of them are companies that come together just for basically an outing and a, you know, similar team-building system, but I mean, we do have a lot to do up here. I don't know if I want to be bogged down every, every, by every 50, you know, right now, you already get stipulation, you know, they're going to have up to 30 private functions at, at the, the Dana Faver. There's 30 more things, articles we might be facing here a year, and we're going to be facing another 50 action items or 100 a year on private functions. I mean, that's kind of strangling it, I don't even know if that's something I want.
Why don't we do this, Mark? We'll, we'll talk to the stadium, we'll get back to the board with both the anticipated number of events and the anticipated crowd size at an event, leading to inclusion-
Let me interject something, Mark, you know, if you're having a corporate outing of 30 people, that defeats the purpose of the Howl at the Moon entertainers.
Yeah, I wouldn't even see why they-
They said the other night, they, they actually need one person per every five square feet to generate that pouty atmosphere. So, if you're going to have a private event, obviously, you want to have it as dense as possible.
Well, I think a private event, A, it could be as little or as, or as many people as necessary to make the, the event itself worthwhile from a business standpoint, so I don't think they're, you know, they're, they're, they could have a 30-person or 50-person or 100-person event in that Howl entertainment area, but if it's financially feasible for them to put on the show, I don't think the number of people is really a, you know, direct correlation.
Well, that, my point is, I don't think they're going, if they do have a private event, it's not going to be small, because the economics won't line up.
That's right. So, let's find out what it is.
It also may not be Howl Entertainment, it may just be using the space.
And what if you have a situation where, like, you know, a rock radio station in Boston decides that every Monday they will have a private event at Spitzville slash Howl at the Moon in Foxborough, come on down.
That would be a popular-
That would be a pri, you know, that would be a private event that would pack on a Monday, which would give you the same concerns as you would have packed Howl at the Moon on Friday, you know, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that would be a, a private event by, you know, encouraging people to come on down.
Well, that's just, well, that's, that's a- Well, that's just, well, that's a question, that's something to...
DeLuca's saying no.
You know, a private event is generally defined as something that's by invitation only, and, you know, I'm not sure that example lines up exactly with that. That sounds, you know, I'm thinking, what I'm hearing is that may more likely be a public event or an event to which the public is invited, as opposed to the public being excluded due to the fact that, you know, it's an invitation only.
I mean, we're just, we're just trying to make sure we cover everything, and things are coming into our heads, or we've been reading about this. So, I mean, I don't consider any question foolish or, you know, not proper.
I don't think that could come up under conditional law, because that specifically says that Howl at the Moon Entertainment won't be available to the general public on any night other than those specified in the previous, in paragraph seven, without a one-day entertainment license. So if you had a radio station coming in, they wouldn't be having Howl Entertainment. Okay.
Let me ask one more dumb question.
No questions dumb, trust me, I'm the queen.
If Howl at the Moon Entertainment wasn't available, could other entertainment venues be available?
No, because they've got a contract with them, John.
I'm asking a question?
Yeah.
Well, I think there's another possibility for private events, and that would be a bowling private event that have nothing to do with Howl. So, you know, the venue has multiple uses for different types of entertainment and different types of events, so, you know, whether they use the stage for something other than Howl, that's possible. Could be a comedian, could be, you know, something, you know, electric youth from, you know, from Franklin School of Performing Arts could be on that stage. You know, I think there's a lot of options that aren't necessarily going to always be Howl at the Moon.
But as far as I, musical entertainment, it would have, they've got a contract with Howl, premier Howl with the Spitzville.
Right, Howl is...
They bought into this whole 40%, I believe, of the whole build-out and everything else.
They're partners.
They're partners, so I don't think they're going to let somebody compete on their stage. Is that what you want, John? Like, you could have like a...
No, no, I just, my question is, you know, the Howl entertainers are not the exclusive entertainment component to Spitzville.
It could be possible that they have an event with a charitable aspect to it, and it's a local, you know, a local group that is performing or doing something, some level of entertainment. I think that's, you know, definitely possible.
Not a profession.
Or a wedding or something like that.
But to be clear, the limitation on, on entertainment applies just to Howl at the Moon, okay? So it's, you've limited what the Howl at the Moon entertainment can be. The limitation on the size of the venue, how many people it can be, and all of those apply generally, but paragraph seven, six, five, four are all directed to Howl at the Moon.
So if there was another entertainment offering...
Yes, I regulated that.
That's completely unregulated right now?
Yes.
That's a problem.
What's that?
That's a potential problem.
What's that?
So if they had, you know, a band in there, name your band, all these conditions are...
It would have to be a private event, though.
Well, that's the other question I have, because in the public events, you contracted to use the Howl at the Moon entertainers exclusively. I don't believe you are.
Yeah, they're going to use the Howl at the Moon entertainers for public events to the maximum allowed under this, under these restrictions, whether the, you know, what other entertainment concepts, I mean, it's primarily it's the Howl...
You could use other entertainment concepts in a public offering.
It could be no different than any other venue at Patriot Place or other...
I mean...
The discussion has always been about Howl at the Moon as the entertainment...
Well, but it blurs the lines between, you know, regulation, capacity, and so on. Right now, all these things are specific to when the Howl at the Moon entertainers are on the stage.
That's right, John, and we, that's absolutely right.
And if the Howl at the Moon is not on the stage, we've got no boundaries.
We have some, you have some boundaries, but you don't have all of the specific boundaries that are addressed to Howl at the Moon.
Right.
This all exercise has been created because of the concern the board had for Howl at the Moon, that's how we drafted this. Moving on.
I just, I'll go back to number 10, it says, "The initial manager of the licensed facility shall be Dan Glaberson, a Spitzville employee." It says the initial manager. Should we include the manager and the initial manager in from then on?
A change in manager has to come before the board. Any change in manager. Okay, okay.
Just to, just to let the audience know.
Let me guide the audience, Jenny, let me guide the audience, please.
No, well, I just wanted, the reason, I mean, what we're looking at right now is a revised entertainment license that we just got a little while ago. This is a little different from the original entertainment license conditions that were within the packet, because some of the languages, some of the language is a little different. And then you have to wonder, why was the lang, why was this word changed? Why was that, why is this taken out? Why was that put in? And that's why, that's why we're questioning this. So just to, just to let, just to let everyone know.
But Mr. Glaberson was at the meeting two weeks ago, was introduced as the manager of record.
Right, no, no, yeah, yeah, but, I mean, like, like, one of it says, "The mission of the live entertainment area shall be regulated utilizing best practices in conjunction with recommendations made by the police chief." Originally, we talked about you have to have either a stamp or a bracelet.
That's correct, and I believe I explained why that changed.
Right, and you just, you just explained it, but it wasn't explained until John asked. I mean, that was one of my questions.
I just started to go through the list and explain it, and I'm sorry if I missed it, but...
No, but the thing is, that was one of the questions that I had. How come, you know, the bracelet isn't mentioned and the, now it's called best practices?
I'm sorry, I had a question about...
No, I'm just, I'm just trying to explain that what we are looking at right now is different from the original set of conditions that was in our packet. That's what we're looking at.
And what is also happening is there's going to be another version of this that we're going to go over again. This is just a preliminary discussion. We're not going to draw every T and cross every I tonight.
Yes, and in transparency, so everybody knows what's going on, that's why we're having the discussion at the table.
Okay.
So questions are going to be asked, that, we're asking questions.
I'm just trying to summarize the changes that we made based on comments we've received to date and trying to highlight what they are. Right. I believe those are the major ones that had any kind of change in them.
Okay, so it sounds like, to your point, Lorraine, is this something you want to discuss further on tonight? As far as, you suggest you don't want to hold us back.
I'll send an email to Cindy and Dick and David about, again, my whole thought is, I understand that, you know, there is the intent to develop a community policing plan. I understand that that involves a consultant, and that will take time. My goal from the beginning was that whatever policing happens up at Patriot Place is in the format of a detail only, that the taxpayers not pay for benefits related to the policing of the area. So knowing that that's the direction that it's going, as long as it's, the details in the format that Ed develops with a consultant to his satisfaction, you know, I think that's the ultimate goal.
Yeah, I think, you know, we've, Ed and I have made, Chief O'Leary and I have made, you know, significant progress. I think he can speak to, you know, that progress. You know, in terms of the, the final version of what this is actually going to look like, it's going to evolve over time. He and I, in our most recent discussion, talked about that, you know, there's no question that we can be at a point of pressure testing this community policing program well in advance of Spitzville opening, so that we're not opening Spitzville, putting pressure on, on the community policing program that he's developing. So, you know, to say that the, the program will be fully defined within two weeks, you know, there's, the consultant is going to be there to work alongside as we go through this process, is that it's, it's not going to be something that should be done in two weeks in terms of the rolling out, the checking, the pressure testing that's going to be required to see if, if what he has proposed will actually work. We, you know, we have a predefined number of officers, he's gone through all that process, but how they act, how they interact with the tenants and the public at Patriot Place is going to be an ongoing education process in which the consultant will be part of that. Again, he can speak to that.
But the framework for that and the, you know, the best practices from other community policing programs should be documented in, in front of us.
Yes, and he has, and he has done that. I mean, he's provided me with a draft of, of basically of best practices.
I thought the consultant was going to be party to drafting that. I didn't think the consultant was going to be part of the guidance or the overview or the implementation of it, but rather in the, in the actual crafting of the program.
Well, the, the offer for, to provide a consultant came from, from, you know, NPP. It's a timing thing, and putting a consultant in place and, you know, within the two-week timeframe we're talking about here is, is, is obviously not practical, that piece of the element. I think having the, the community policing plan that Ed has researched and feels comfortable with certainly is, you know, a possibility within the next couple of weeks. I mean, he's, he's very close to it already.
So what we could do, if the board wants, it's, it appears that it's likely that we can, in the settlement agreement, have the framework of what the community policing plan will consist of and leave the details of it to a memorandum that the chief will provide following the execution of the settlement agreement. I honestly, that's fine, I just didn't think that's the way the board wanted to go, but if that's the way you'd like to do it, that's fine.
So what's your intention is here?
Yeah, I guess because I envision that this is something that's going to be developing over time, and...
Moving target?
Moving target, you can't really put caps on things like this. Again, it's at the discretion of public safety needs, and so, you know, that there's a commitment that this is going to happen, yes, with the help of a consultant, and if, I mean, hypothetically, if the consultant's work is not to the satisf, you know, if somehow it doesn't come out the way the chief thinks it could work, then maybe community policing, whatever that means, doesn't happen as was originally perceived, but there continues to be the work done up there needed to maintain public safety in whatever format the chief feels is appropriate.
Right.
So I don't think we can lose in that. I just don't want community policing to be like a handcuff, per se, either, you know? I don't, I don't want it to be limiting from the standpoint of things that could change.
Right, and quite frankly, you know, as I've said all along, that the, the right policing model for Patriot Place should be independent of the, you know, this particular Spitzville arrangement.
Absolutely, right.
And that's really what Chief and I are working towards.
And this is something that you started last holidays, you know?
Yes.
Coming forward, you know? So are you saying you're, you're, I'm trying to understand your position here. Are you saying you want to approve the rest of the settlement agreement? Or, no, so what are you saying?
Yeah, if I could, Lorraine, I think what Lorraine is suggesting is that we finish the, we come back to you in two weeks with a finished settlement agreement and have within it the frameworks of a community policing plan that will guarantee...
Well, that's kind of what I'm asking. That's what I'm saying, that, so...
That's, I thought that's what you were saying.
Is there anything else in the settlement agreement that you want changed? Because, just so we don't have to keep doing this every two weeks.
I just, you know, again, I just need to go through it one more time.
That's fine.
Mark, can I add something?
Yeah, sorry for the awful quiet over there.
We've got the entertainment license, we've got the alcohol license, and we've got the settlement agreement. What I don't want to see hap, continue to happen, and I understand we got stuff in the packet, but we were also invited to give comments independently to counsel, and I think that's what some of us or all of us did independently. So I think Cindy did a nice job taking the stuff that we got Friday, updating it with the stuff that we got today, and then coming in and telling us what the changes are. At some point, we've got to put pencils down, we're, I'm hearing a lot of, you know, what if, what if we had private groups, what if they had weddings, and how do we control it? At some point, we've got to stop going back and forth and say to the attorneys, you know, we've had it for two weeks now, we've given the comments, we got it back, if there's anything we want to change, let's do it at this table, so we're not going back again over the two weeks and getting something else. Because I think there was some good concessions, there's some good give and take, and there's been a lot of work done on this, but if we keep looking for the worst-case scenario, the sky's falling, we're never going to get done. This has been going on since November.
Good.
So unless there's something large, I think we've got to say pencils down, they've done as much as they can.
Well, Jim, there's still confusion about whether or not private parties need a one-day license. We, we got two different opinions on that. There's still some material issues that need to be worked on.
I understand, and we're hearing it, but I'm also hearing we're going to email more stuff back and forth. If we've got stuff to do, let's just do it, send it over, and try to get it done for the next meeting.
No, I agree, but I...
I just don't want it to keep going on and on like this.
When you hear the discussion at this table, you know, it's very different from when you, as an individual, that's all we can do is review this and send in our comments, but then when you hear the discussion, other points that others bring up, you know, that starts getting your wheels in motion, I think that's really, it's just the fine details that's happening.
I think we're saying the same thing, but let's have the discussion at the table rather than five separate people going back and hitting us two weeks later with separate in, in items.
All right, so you have a situation with the private...
No, I think, I think there's, there's some refinement that needs to take place. I think we're tabled until we see the refinement.
All right, so that's what John's looking for. You've stated a public safety situation, you're, you'll be satisfied with the moving target, but you want the parameters in agreement. Jenny, you have any more concerns?
On the settlement, on...
Yeah, I'm hoping to want settlement or entertainment license or the alcohol license?
No, I mean, I'm going to review it again.
Sure, that's right. Mark, so that it, is it the board's wish that we come back, there'll be a process during the next two weeks where we communicate with you about the refinements that are needed? But should I work?
Before we vote, I would like to see the final documents, the absolute last final documents that aren't going to evolve.
Right, so let me get to that.
We're falling so far behind tonight, we're going to have to have another meeting next week.
Let me just say one thing, but short of the final policing, community policing program, because that is a, going to be a work in progress that evolves.
I understand it's going to roll out, but I would like to see the framework for it.
Okay.
Okay, but if, if you get what will be a final, our final recommendation of settlement agreement, and within it is the framework of a community policing plan, as opposed to the plan itself, is that the direction the board wants us to go? That's apparently what you want, Lorraine.
Yes, but I think tonight Ed was going to give us some review of that. Can we hear that?
He is, but in terms, just in terms of drafting, we can get you in two weeks, a final agreement, but that will contain the framework of a community policing plan as opposed to the plan.
Well, the only thing I'm kind of concerned about here, too, is we got a lot more to do tonight, and we're falling behind drastically right now. I thought we were going to be done shorter with this because I didn't think the discussion was going so lengthy, because the police chief wasn't ready to have the discussion tonight, and the public's not aware of that, but the chief was not prepared to give us a final agreement about the policing tonight. And I thought this was actually going to be pulled off tonight, but then the council said they still wanted to discuss the other terms, which we've done to bring it to this situation, so is anybody not available next week? If you are, just say it, I don't, you know, it's not...
You mean to continue going through?
Well, we're going to go, we're going to go over this, but we also got 10 pairs of executive session minister, ministry review, non-executive, regular ministry review, Emily Lees, we've got...
Warren has to be done today.
The warrant has to be done tonight, well, I understand, but we also got executive session tonight on four other categories. You know, it's, you know what happens after 10 o'clock, everybody just starts getting all, you know, tired and fed up. It's just the way it works.
So, Mark, we don't have a regular scheduled meeting next Tuesday, so you're saying that you want to schedule another meeting?
Yeah, unless anybody's got some...
And continue what we're doing now to, just to, because we still have to go through the license, and we still have to go.
You need to get your thoughts and comments back to counsel, they're going to take care of your thoughts and counsel, get back to you individually to make sure your thoughts and comments are taken care of individually. Then we're going to come in here, and they're going to explain to everybody the final document, and then we're going to end this, hopefully.
Mark, you're talking about doing that a week from tonight, you just...
Is that possible? I'm asking.
I'm, I'm going to be out of town.
All right, so it's two weeks, then?
Yeah, two weeks.
But, but do we think that in two weeks we'll be at the point of voting?
Can we, can we get, Ed, can you submit to us something preliminary regarding the plan?
Yeah, because I think Lorraine's right when it comes down to the moving target
Yep. Because I think Lorraine's right when it comes down to the moving target with Ed. I think it's always something to build on, which they started last year. So--
So, I understand. Thank you.
Could I just report briefly, Mr. Chairman, that as to the, the ABCC litigation, in consideration of your vote from two weeks ago, the hearing that had previously been scheduled for the 12th of March has now been rescheduled to the 22nd of April, with the idea that if you come to terms on the settlement, that would resolve the, the matters before the ABCC. I also provided to you, and I apologize for the delay in getting to you the, the document, which I considered to be the, the conditions of the, the license transfer and change of location that's been proposed. I also gave you tonight a little bit of an update in that to make sure that I'm not in conflict or that it's in sync with the, the terms of the entertainment license provisions. You'll have time to consider that as well. I'll email that copy to each of you, so you'll have that. It is by and large boilerplate, taking most of my guidance from other licenses that have been issued here in Foxborough, as well as your existing rules and regulations for alcohol license holders. And, and then in addition, some of the particulars that came through the hearing process, I've also proposed as, as conditions of the, the, the transfer of the license apart from the entertainment license. So, you'll have that to consider as well.
So, to once again be clear to the public, neither party was really ready to complete a settlement agreement tonight. Is that my understanding? Okay. So, it's not one entity, it's both. We're trying to work this together. Okay. Go ahead.
I just want to ask one question.
To the mic, please.
Okay. Debbie Stewart, 44 Napaha Heights House. I would just like, because my head is swimming now, and I'm sitting here, and I've been following this since October, if you could just reiterate what you said about where you're going to be in two weeks, that is it going to go for a vote in two weeks? Is it going to be still up for discussion in two weeks? Are we going to still have more bombs being thrown in at the process at the last minute? Because I think people at home need to know, and there's a multitude of people that are watching and paying attention. And this, my God, this feels like having a baby. It's taking nine months. It's going on more and more and more. So, I think if you could just, without any interruption from anybody else, us or them at the table, would just explain to the public what your expectation is and what the bottom line is in two weeks, because it's going on long enough.
I think, I think I just did when I said both parties weren't even ready to have a settlement agreement approved tonight. They both concur that, and the board has a couple more concerns. They'll take it up with council individually. Council will prepare this, with both councils, prepare a final settlement agreement for two weeks, and then we'll see how it goes. I can't tell you how the board's going to vote in two weeks. That's nothing I can do about that. So--
But what is your expectation?
Mine or individuals?
What is your expectation that there will be a vote? You will ask for a vote.
That was my expectation today, and two councils said that neither party was ready yesterday.
It keeps going on. It keeps moving on.
Well, it's, Debbie, it's called due diligence, and that's what we're doing. We're doing due diligence.
All right. Let's move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Would we do the flavor to go in executive session and get rid of council?
No, we have to get--
I understand that, and come back? Or do we want to hang council to dry, or the citizens to dry here? We want to continue with the way it's supposed to go here?
Executive session.
Sharon and Bill.
I'd rather do executive session at the end, go through this.
Okay. But just, I'm, I'm looking at--
I'm more concerned with the, the--
The warrant.
Getting the warrant article, though.
Okay. Bill, Sharon with you? Yes, she is. Mark Ford, please. Okay, let's break out the warrant and--
So, Mark, as you know, most of the preliminary warrant items are handled on a year-by-year basis. So, you know, I think you should probably group a bunch of those at the beginning and vote support for those, and then we can move on to the other ones.
Okay. And we, we will--
Do you want to reopen the warrant?
Do we reopen the warrant first?
Well, that's, you need to make that decision. So, that's--
I entertain a motion from the board to reopen the warrant.
Okay. I'll move that the board of selectmen reopen the fiscal year 2015 warrant.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, there you are. Okay.
It sounds like, timing-wise, it, the issue that Steve has raised for the Southeast Regional Voc Tech could potentially wait till the fall. And given that we have 37 articles already, I was just going to suggest that we defer that to the fall.
Well, we can take no action on it. He's got to get to WADCOM before he gets to us.
But I think it just, it just puts one more thing on them.
Steve, if this waited till the fall, would it be the end of the world?
No, it would not be the end of the world. Would you like me to go to the mic?
No.
No, we're good then. All right.
I think we got our answer.
It would be the end of the world.
All right. Steve, you just said it would not be the end of the world.
Okay. I'll retract my motion.
Okay. Let's move forward. All right. Bob, we're going to start at number one and move right through, and as we get to the planning board articles, we'll hit them.
Sure. Actually, one is just the annual, the results of the annual town election that's held every year.
To be determined.
Yeah. Two is the annual town reports. Three is the reports of committees. Four is the operating budget. Five is the CIT budget. Six is the personnel bylaws, so it's any increases to income such as contracts and things like that.
Is that something we still want to do?
That, that's something you have to do, because there's been no change. There's still non-union personnel.
Okay.
Hi, Bill.
Good evening.
Oh, yeah. Bill, by the way-- Why is a church mouse over here? That's okay.
Articles seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 are potential settled contracts. Two, we have pretty much settled. One's been ratified by you. The DPW library is soon to be in the same situation. But the others, we really haven't made any headway, so they may not--
Be no action on maybe two of them.
Right. But you, you, you still vote that you support the article to be in there.
Okay.
Article 12 is annual budget adjustment. Article 13 is unpaid bills from the prior year, and there's a couple of those on there. Article 14 is the annual department revolving fund authorization. Article 15 is the OPEB. Article 16 is to expend the chapter 90 funds on highway repairs. And so, those are all ones that are done on an annual basis. So, I believe you, you should be comfortable to vote support for those items being, remaining in the warrant.
Okay. John, did you write down those numbers? Does he join them off?
I have them, 1 through 16.
1 through 16, okay. Would you, want to take a vote on just 1 through 16 at this point?
I think that's, makes some sense.
Okay. I move that the board of selectmen approve the insertion of articles 1 through 16 in the fiscal year 2015 warrant.
Second.
Discussion?
Under discussion. So, the vote is to insert them, or are we voting to support them?
To support them.
That they stay on?
No, that you're going to support. You're going to provide--
Oh, support. Okay. Yep.
Alls in favor?
They're not supporting.
Okay. All right. Mr. Cutler, next.
Okay. Article 17 is a change to the personnel bylaw. The recommended changes by the HR director. There's only two changes. One is to replace some language of town administrator with human resources director. It's just a clerical change. And then the other one is a change under the Cobra law. So, it's a, a legal matter that the language should meet what the statute provides. So, that's a very simple, straightforward. There's no, you know, nothing hidden in there. It's just all housekeeping stuff that hasn't been done and needs to be due.
You want to vote on that at this point in time?
Sure.
Mr. Gray?
Okay. I move that we, the, the board of selectmen support article 17 in the town warrant with May town meeting.
Second.
Just, just under discussion, I don't have the personnel bylaw in front, but the ramifications of putting, replacing town administrator with human resources director, two totally different positions. Why, why are we doing one instead of the other?
Because we didn't have a human resources director before, and that's why it was written for town administrator, which is now town manager. So, we can tell how long it's been since it's been changed. But now that there's an HR director, this change would allow the HR director to perform the function that's supposed to--
I get that. But what, what's the function? What, what does the human resource director do in that, the town administration used to do?
What is number 27?
What's number 27?
I believe it has to do with, you know, hearing grievances and things like that.
Could, could we say town manager or designate?
You could.
I'd like to.
Yeah. But I mean, you support the idea of a change, and you can work on a change of the language.
Like that, James?
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. I, I, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So, go ahead.
No. Well, I just have a question after you've finished talking about this.
Well--
It has to do with personal wage bylaw.
Okay.
Okay. Come on. Are these the only changes to the personal wage bylaw?
That's it.
Only, the only reason I'm asking is because we had discussed changes to the personal wage bylaw--
Right. And the reason--
Over a year ago.
The reason that hasn't gone anywhere is because the discussion, the potential for the non-union personnel to unionize, and then the majority of the personal wage bylaw would not really be in play.
But there will be some, even, even--
There'd be some, there'd be a small number of employees that--
So, there still will be a personal wage bylaw.
But then you would have to, it doesn't make sense to change it now until you know the status of those other employees. Once you know the status of those employees, then you can make the changes that you need to make to the bylaw.
But, but the changes that, that were discussed earlier, it doesn't make any difference what the status is. It's just there were certain things in that bylaw that were going to be, that were going to be looked at and tightened up. That was the expectation over a year ago.
That was the expectation. And then the, the change was that non-union personnel have requested the opportunity to unionize. And so, the majority of those employees would not fall under this bylaw. So, the bylaw would deal with maybe up to 10 people, maybe.
Including yourself.
No, I'm not even in it because I'm elected.
He's an elected official. No, I mean, as town manager. You're looking at yourself.
No, contract.
Under contract.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is that there is still going to be a consolidated personal wage bylaw that in some--
But depending, depending on who the people are, it would--
All right. Let me put it this way. Can I get a guarantee or at least a promise that the personal wage bylaw will be reviewed within a pretty, you know, pretty soon? Because this has been over a year that these things have been--
I, I will tell you that you had asked Cindy to do that, and she was in the process of doing that, met with her committee several times, received a lot of pushback from members of our own committee, especially when the unionization happened. So--
From what I understand, the committee, I mean, I spoke to, was it Gary Wise? I don't, I don't think the committees met.
Although, and they have met. They have met.
Well, he didn't go.
He was not on the committee. They had a committee of town employees that were working on changes. So--
So, Cindy's committee, not the personal wage?
Right. Yeah. Was not the personal wage.
So--
So, I, I can't make you any guarantees, but this fine gentleman right here might be able to answer that question for you.
I promise.
Well, I mean, I, after I take office, I certainly would, will take a look at it. I mean, I certainly--
Don't you swear?
Yeah. No, it's quite, obviously something needs to be looked at. And to what extent, I'm not sure what you're referring to, obviously, but at some point, we'll have a conversation and find out, I'll find out what those issues are. We'll, we'll try and get it squared away. Okay?
Okay. Article, changing the language, John?
Yeah, I'm changing the language to replace town administrator with human resources director to read town manager or town managers designate.
Okay. Motion?
I already made a motion, but I'm going to have to make another motion that we accept the articles we support, article 17 as amended.
Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Article 18 is the, to amend the senior tax program bylaw. And I'll have Randy come up and speak to that if you would--
He already has. Anybody got objections?
You're already comfortable with it?
Anybody got any problems with that? Okay.
Okay.
John?
I move that the board of selectmen support article 18 as written.
Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor? All right. Okay, next.
Article 19 is a request for funds for the master planning. Sharon can speak to that directly. If you have any questions about it, they're in the process, but they are, need the additional funding to complete the master plan, which I believe is due to be completed in fiscal 15. Is that correct, Sharon?
That's correct. This is money that was voted last year that we did not spend. We're asking to have it re-appropriated to complete the master plan.
Very simple. Very simple. John?
Okay. I move that the board of selectmen support article 19 as written.
Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor? All right. Next, please, Bob.
Article 20, special legislation. It's to repurpose state hospital property, and would allow the town to offer that up to, under an RFP process for people to bid on that property for renovation or rebuild.
Long overdue.
Yeah.
The auditorium potentially--
Yes, absolutely. Long overdue. Unplundered liabilities hanging around everywhere. John?
Just a question. Is this the first time we've seen this, or has this come up in varying forms?
No, it's first time actually, because we've, for the, that area, because that was donated as recreational area, correct?
From the state.
From the state.
It did, went through this process in 2006 with the Children's Advocacy Center.
Right. That's where I saw it. Right.
Right.
Which is a portion of the same lot.
We did the same thing.
Right, right. That was Bill Keegan, no, Keating. Not to be confused, I tell you.
So, this would mean that there's, you know, parcels that are underutilized and not utilized, we could sell off to be privately developed, specifically the auditorium.
Yep.
And potentially another parcel of land. We've had discussions with Mr. Barrows and D-Cam. They're both supportive. The, nobody wants to see the auditorium fall down like the chapel is about to. So--
Okay. I'll, I'll move that the board of selectmen support article 20 as written.
Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor?
Hi.
All right. My vote?
Article 21 is a request to have the board accept $30,000 to issue easements to Mass Electric. To, basically what's happened is they have existing lines, but there are some pieces of title ownership where they don't have the easements they need, and they're going to be, they are working on the union loop. But the, the area that we're talking about here runs along the railroad tracks next to the highway garage and across the street where the--
Compost site.
Compost site was, and the horse pit and all of that. So, Bill, Sharon, myself, and Roger Hill have been working with the people. Actually, it should be Verizon, isn't it?
No, it's Mass Electric.
Is it? Is it Mass Electric? I thought it was Verizon, but--
It's National Grid, yeah.
Um, National Grid, okay. So, we, we negotiated this number with them. We went back and forth, and we agreed on a $30,000 number. And we all thought that that was a decent number for rights that they, you know, have along the line already. And they're just securing those to, you know, allow them to go and do the work they need to, strengthening the union loop.
Should this read Mass Electric or National Grid?
National Grid.
No, it should read Mass Electric--
Really?
Which is the corporate name.
Oh, okay.
Still, okay. All right. I move that the board of selectmen support article 21 as written.
Second.
Discussion? Alls in favor?
Hi.
Okay. Next, Bob.
Article 22, we're revisiting the solar back in 2012 annual town meeting. We voted essentially the first paragraph of this article. We, we're re-including this first paragraph for the solar project because there's been a change in legislation that allows us to get into a program where it doesn't have to go out to bid. We have a power options program where we're already a member, and we've been dealing with a company negotiating some terms for a net metering credit agreement that would allow us to get credit against our electric bill. And their plan is to, you know, under paragraph one, to repurpose the landfill property for the solar field. And then paragraph two would repurpose the former town filter beds and compost site for a solar field there as well. I brought Bill up to speed. He's going to be in, in some negotiations with us hopefully next week, and so that he can, can become part of that process as well.
Right. You, so you, let me understand. Are you circumventing the bid process?
No, because this statute, the chapters 164, section 137, allows these kind of energy deals as long as it's, they've already been vetted out through the IG. as long as it's, they've already been vetted out through the IG, this power options company, so the project already has been vetted out by the IG, so we're allowed to, under this statute, because we're a municipality, get into these deals, so.
So, vendor's already been identified?
Yes, yep.
It's like if we buy computers and we use the state contract, because there's a good deal on the price of computer.
Yeah, but, but because this is energy, it's allowed for, you know, the solar, electric, and, and a lot of these others, as long as you're in this power, this buying group, you're allowed to do that, through that process.
Okay, John?
Any other questions on that one? Okay, I move that the board of selectmen support Article twenty-two as written.
Second.
Discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article twenty-three is special legislation, liquor licenses, so twenty-three and twenty-four both, one for up at Patriot Place and one for General Town, and I know there's been some discussion, I don't know if it's been even part of the Splitsville settlement, so I, I know there's been some concern maybe that it's a little premature and, you know, get your feedback whether or not you think.
Well, it's been detached from the Splitsville settlement.
Well, both, you know.
Both separate.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Right, so, exactly what you said, and I think that new town manager wants to be weighing in on this whole situation, so like I stated in, in the, to the newspaper prior, and I'll make it, in case you missed the newspaper, there's no way it's gonna be vetted in time by AdCom or the town, to be honest, so there'll be a special meeting sometime later in the year, and then I think with the new town manager involved, and a lot of discussion and a lot of input from the, the community will, will continue that at a later time. Anybody disagree with me, or?
No, actually, I think this is linked in some ways to the master plan, and I just.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest if the planning board, why the planning board come in, because the master plan, they've been talking about this for a very long time.
Right, right, you're absolutely right.
Well, I, I want them to be separate, and.
They are separate.
Yeah, I know, I know, but I don't understand why the, asking for the town liquor licenses can't be something that can be put on the Maytown.
Because we're not ready for the mass plan and everything else, we're not ready on either end.
But the, where, I don't understand why the master plan would, would make a difference, I, I understand that in order to help development of the downtown, once the sewer comes in, I mean, that's all part of the master plan, but also, we need the, we would need liquor licenses for the down, strictly for the downtown area.
It's actually.
And because it takes time to do the legislation, I think it would be, would behoove us to do this at, at the Maytown meeting, get the process going for the, for the, for the downtown area, we, we.
It's not the only area that we want to consider, that's why it's not ready.
Well, what other area do you consider?
There's the old, you know, down the Foxborough Plaza that might be developed, that's not downtown.
Well, when I mean downtown, I mean down, I mean Foxfield Plaza, you're not gonna have, you're gonna, gonna have separate ones for.
It's not, in my opinion, ready. Does any other board member think it's, in their opinion, and Ginny obviously thinks it's ready, for just the town?
Actually, I think this is, if, if this was held sometime in the fall, I think it'd be, this, this is a huge issue, it's gonna reshape the town.
Right.
Maybe not for the better, but I, I'd rather hold on it.
Lorraine?
I would like us to discuss the home petition for the liquor license for the town, I was talking with someone from Water and Sewer Commission that said, looks like the IMA is in a great place right now, and Mansfield's town meeting, which will be coming up around ours, same time as ours, will decide whether or not we're ready to sign, and assuming that it's gonna go the way they're projecting it will go, then we would be in a position to look at starting to potentially sell some parcels that we have queued up through the town asset review committee, like in the center of town, for example, and having liquor licenses available for that process.
But if you don't earmark them for certain spots, you're gonna be getting new liquor licenses and putting them anywhere in town also. I'm telling you, by my.
I think that tying it to, you know, tying it to the plant, the master plan, we've talked about, you know, there's development being discussed in Foxfield Plaza, we've talked about downtown, you know.
It's my understanding that Mr. Greeter and Mr. Weinfeld are coming to your April first meeting to discuss the master plan in general, the downtown, and potentially liquor licenses as well, as well at that point in time.
Okay.
But I just.
Well, where did we come up with the number five licenses for the town, because I had, I had called the planning board to find out what would be the suggested number, and then all of a sudden there were five.
I, I just picked a number for a placeholder, and we hadn't discussed it yet, and knowing that the Patriots were looking for seven, three to come back to the town, but yeah, I just put a number in for a placeholder.
I'm gonna go right to the, to the boss of the AdCom right now.
The fourth.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Do you think there's any feasible way that AdCom's gonna be able to digest this thing and present something to town meeting for five new townwide liquor licenses by May twelfth, thirteenth, twelve?
I'm trying to remember the wording of the article itself, does it specifically mention Foxfield Plaza?
No, no.
Downtown. It's, it's for the town.
The wording itself still needs to be tightened up, so, since you have to vote tonight on these Warren articles so that we can get started with them, and it doesn't seem like this one's really ready.
It says outside the sites containing developments known as Patriot Place and Chesna Green, so that's the rest of the town.
Right, but it sounds like you wanna target, target certain areas with, for certain licenses, is that not correct?
It is my.
That's not part of the wording of the Warren article, so I would think you'd wanna reword that article so that it's, you know, specifically mentions the areas that you're trying to target, otherwise, you know, like I think was Mark said, it could end up anywhere.
James, you have anything to add?
Thank you.
Yeah, I think with everything that's been going on with Splitsville and Howell, I think if this question came to the town meeting in May, do we want five nut licenses or six or seven? I think it's gonna be no. If the question came to them with the plan that says the IMA is, is ironed out in Mansfield, now we have sewer, we've got Foxfield Field Development, we've got two licenses over there, they might move to Town Center while that's under construction, then we would take these and put them over there, you've got the sewer behind us, you've got the planning board coming in and presenting it in, in a logical way, I just don't think we can do that by May, and, and to get it to May, I think it's gonna fall apart unless all the boards work, and it's gonna start with the planning board explaining to us about the master plan. I mean, I, I sat in those master plan meetings a year ago, and people put, you know, dots of where they wanna see things and where they want open space. There is a logical process, but I think if we rush it between now and May, it's gonna fall apart.
It'll explode, so.
Well, what I don't want, I, I want it to see them to remain separate, separate articles.
They are separate.
Yes.
Well, I, thank you, and I want them, I would like to see them remain separate articles.
I have no intention of making a meeting different, nor does anybody else. Okay, so I would take a motion.
Yeah, I, I move that the board of selectmen support Article twenty-three as written.
It's not support, though.
No, I put it in the affirmative, and we can say no.
Okay, okay. This is motion made.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all's in favor? All's against? Okay, thank you, John, next.
Next, Article twenty-four, I move that the board of selectmen support Article twenty-four as written.
Second.
Discussion, all's in favor? All's against? Zero five again, okay, that's you, Bob?
Okay, Article twenty-five is the request to have the child safety committee placed into the general by law.
Okay, let's put that one on hold so we can at least let the planning board and Mr. Cazbury get home.
Okay, so we're starting with Article twenty-six.
Article twenty-six is to accept chapter forty, section twenty-two G, which allows funds from handicap parking violations to go into the use of the Foxborough Commission on Disabilities, is that correct, Bill?
They, they can only use the funds, it's in a separate account, they'll only be allowed to use the funds for community awareness, awareness, or removing physical barriers for the public, they cannot use those funds for individuals.
Or their budget, or.
Right, correct, so.
Staff, or anything else.
Right now fines just go into the general, the general fund.
No, earmark it, it's a good idea. John, do you agree?
Yep.
Motion, please?
Okay, I move that the board of selectmen support Article twenty-six as written.
Second.
Discussion?
Just out of curiosity, is, is this an advocacy group coming forward with this, or is this the planning board, or is this the treasurer? Where, where did this originate from?
The Foxborough Commission on Disabilities.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, James. All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, please.
Article twenty-seven is to accept the Mass General Laws, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U, which allows by a vote of the board of selectmen to release funds that are being held for bonds for new subdivisions, and currently, we have to go to town meeting to get that approval, is that correct, Sharon?
That is correct, so defaulted subdivisions in order to expend the bond money that we receive from banks and others. Now, we have to go through town meeting appropriation process, the planning board would have to come to you for approval to enter into a contract, as we do for any other contract, so it facilitates that process for the planning board, maybe not for you, but.
I think it's a great idea, so, if anybody doesn't disagree?
Well, I mean, that's the ultimate check and balance, is it's got, the town voters have to approve it, but I can ima, and I've seen it at town meeting, everyone's scurrying because if you miss the town meeting, then you gotta wait six months.
Right.
Would make your life a lot easier on the planning board to work with the applicants.
Potentially, Autumn Estates will need to replant trees, do landscaping, put in signs, clean drainage, and, and put up a fence, it's potentially five different contracts, so we'd go through the town procurement process, get required estimates or written bids, reassure that we've done that correctly, and then come to you and ask for permission to enter into a contract, as opposed to waiting until a town meeting, and then explaining to the town meeting why we need permission to spend eighteen hundred dollars on a fence, or whatever it happens to be.
So, worst case, if the, the money was sent back prematurely and contractor got his money back, but the work wasn't done before it went through the town?
These are monies we have not released because of deficiencies in the subdivisions.
Correct, so now you release them and they're not done, but that, that's.
These are monies we did not release that the banks, upon public hearing and notice, gave us the bond money to complete the subdivisions. They've defaulted, it's like a mortgage default.
So the contractor walked away and the town is stuck either finishing it, or.
The town is stuck finishing it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the short answer is it's much more efficient.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for the.
I was very surprised the town had not adopted this statute.
Okay.
All right, I move that the board of selectmen support Article twenty-seven as written and submitted.
Second.
Discussion, discussion, I'll say, you know, this is, sometimes it's a little bit painful for Sharon, or Bob, or Bill, or a lot of us to go through this whole explanation again, but what we're trying to do is educate the twenty-five viewers that we have, or what what we're trying to accomplish here.
Thousands.
Yes, so.
So. But Sharon, you're gonna go through the same process they would normally go through for a town meeting, and bring all the information to the board of selectmen that we can dispatch it on a more timely basis.
That's correct. So that we could potentially, every two weeks, deal with an issue instead of waiting six months, two years for a town meeting.
We don't mind going until midnight, it's great. No, actually, I think it is more efficient.
Hey, you want to approve every special occasion, you want fifty or a hundred of those, yeah.
All right, that was seconded, I think.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, okay, next.
Article twenty-eight's to amend general by law, Article five, section six, stadium regs, essentially what this is, is we've, as you know, we've been having a lot of stadiums, concerts that have gone beyond their normal time, and there was not a provision to fine them or whatever, so this is in conjunction with the personnel up at the Kraft Group, and Bill has borrowed from the Mansfield by law that they have over at the.
Great Woods, yeah.
Great Woods, whatever they're calling it today.
Tweeter Center.
Tweeter's City.
It's the Boston Garden.
So, Bill has already vetted this language with the Kraft Group, they are okay with the language, and it provides for a basically a per attendee fine for going over five minutes, or ten minutes, or fifteen minutes.
Didn't we not put this into effect last summer?
No, we brought it up.
We, you didn't put it on.
I thought there was a handshake agreement that we would.
There was, but it has to be voted into the bylaws.
Oh, I know that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they were very amendable to this, so, and actually, you, you'll find out with the chairman, if they have a, like, one year, Bruce Springsteen came in, like, with a horrific thunderstorm, they ended up calling me and asking me if they could run over on time, and I, I granted it, because it doesn't take a full board, the chairman can do that, and, I mean, he didn't get on stage like nine o'clock, he's supposed to be there, or nine-thirty, he's supposed to be there an hour before, he gets stuck in Edelina, Providence. So, it becomes an issue, so now, they won't have to call the chairman, they can just run over and pay the fines.
That's one way to look at it.
They will, they are eligible for show cause hearing under this, so, and the board here will assess the fine, and they, they, it spells everything out, how, how the process is, so, it's a fair and equitable.
Yes, it is.
All right, I move that the board of selectmen support Article twenty-eight as written.
Second.
Discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, next.
Article twenty-nine, it's amending the general bylaws, section eleven, which is the.
Scenic roads.
Scenic roads by law, and Sharon can give you any of the information you need on that, but it's adding these streets that are listed here.
Shaw Spruce Street's one of them, very scenic.
No, sorry, we missed that one. This largely comes from a project that Jennifer Thomas, who's slightly related to Mr. Larry Thomas, did for a class at Brown, where she looked at existing scenic roads, nobody could remember why they were designated, she took all the attributes, put it all in a GIS, and said, what other roads in town meet the same criteria, and generated a list. The planning board went through the list and looked at it, in addition, there's some housekeeping changes, we can adopt rules and regulations, and the general law has changed minutely, so we now have a little bit of teeth to the by law. What we did for Cross Street in the fall is we notified everyone who lived on the street that we were proposing to designate their road as scenic road. We will do that as well, and not move forward with any roads that the majority of residents object to the designation, but we haven't had the hearings yet.
It's interesting, I was at a planning board meeting about maybe eighteen months ago, and there was a project on my road, and I, I mentioned that my road is a scenic road, and members of the planning board went on Earth as that, they actually had to go and get the book, look it up, and sure enough, but then there was some confusion over whether or not you could only, you could, you could modify anything that wasn't town property, for instance, a stone wall or a tree, and I still think that there's a lot of confusion around it, but in other words, if it's not, if it's private property and you still modify it, you could indeed change the character of the community.
Right, we have no, we have no jurisdiction under the Scenic Road Act to impact private property. There are some historic districts which have included the landscape as part of the historic fabric, but by and large, the Scenic Road Act has no impact beyond the town right of way, so that what people do on their own personal property is beyond.
Right, but it was meant to protect stone walls, and meant to protect sort of the rural nature of the neighborhood.
The trees, right, right, and hopefully, people that buy a house on that street value that, those attributes, but if they don't, they don't.
All right, thank you, daughter, for doing this, it's long overdue.
How, how does this impact the, and we talked about this a little bit last week, the DPW and their budget, when they have to maintain, work around, things like that, I know Roger had brought it up.
Well, there's emergency provisions, if there's a storm, they're exempt from, they have a blanket order from the wetlands, the Conservation Commission, and they're exempt from scenic roads, but for routine DPW work, they would have a scenic road hearing. If it impacted public shade trees, we potentially would have a joint hearing with you as public shade tree commissioners, so.
So if there's a tree that needs to be taken down, the DPW can't just cut it down, they have to come in front of a process.
They would have to come in front of the planning board for hearing.
Has Roger, the DPW, been in front of the planning board to discuss this?
He provided written. He provided written comments, which I have shared with the board, and which we will read into the record at the public hearing.
Okay.
Just a question, was the original intent of this bylaw ever found?
Within the town of Foxborough?
Yeah, in other words, it was created some, at some time in the past, with the original?
Well, it was a state law that the town adopted.
Okay, fine.
And in their, in adopting, they named eleven streets as scenic. We didn't know why.
Okay, I never knew the process, but however it came to be.
It's a general bylaw, but it's a paragraph.
Right.
I worked in Dover, and every, every road that was not a numbered state highway and was built before subdivision control law was a scenic road. And I had crazy cops out issuing non-criminal disposition tickets, "Call Sharon," you know. And I'd get these.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen support Article twenty-nine as written.
Second.
Discussion, alls in favor?
Aye.
Next, please.
Article thirty is an amendment to the general bylaws, amended Article five, by inserting a Section twenty-two, which is complete streets bylaw that does not exist today. Is that correct, Sharon?
That is correct. This tracks mass DOT policy, which is in the process of becoming legislation in the state. As Mr. DeVellis noted, Mr. Hill provided comments on this as well. Basically, it says that when we think about streets, we will think about all modes of transportation, walking, bicycling, driving cars, driving trucks, providing public transit appropriate. We recognize that every street in town does not have a sidewalk, and every street in town probably should not have a sidewalk. But certainly, within the downtown, there should be a continuous, safe sidewalk network, so people can walk. Certainly, within the Chestnut Green area, that was designed as a walkable pedestrian neighborhood, there should be a continuous sidewalk system that's safe and convenient to the people that live there. So this is a policy that would be put into the general bylaws, which states that.
John?
You ask questions, or a motion?
Motion, then we'll have discussion.
Okay. I move that the Board of Selectmen support Article thirty as submitted.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just, would, would this, would this kick in when any of the roads are being redone? And to what degree would they be, would they have to be redone before, like a Cape Seal, you know, quick and dirty sealing of the road? Crack sealing of the road, or something. Would that, would that, would this kick in, if that were done to a street?
Routine maintenance?
Does that have to be main, you know, the redoing of the whole, the entire road?
Mm-hmm.
Says maintenance. Well, it talks about construction. I think routine maintenance, Jenny, is, a street project is construction, reconstruction, retrofit, maintenance, alteration, or repair of any street. But it does not include minor routine upkeep, such as cleaning, sweeping, mowing, spot repair, and interim measures.
Spot repair would cover crack sealing.
Crack sealing.
But if you repaved a street, it would look fine.
Right, you would then evaluate whether you needed to potentially upgrade facilities. It may be as simple as making sure that the grates on the drains are oriented so that a bicycle tire doesn't get stuck in them. You know, rotate the grate ninety degrees. Okay, and does this include street lighting? It does not. Okay.
More discussion? Alls in favor? Bob?
Article thirty-one and thirty-two are in tandem. This is the codification project that was started in two thousand and twelve, and we're now at a point where the code has been drafted and reviewed. Sharon and Bill have been very instrumental in helping me get through the process with General Code, who is the company that is providing the services to us. So essentially, what's gonna happen is they took the bylaw, the general bylaw, and they put it in a format. So we had before where the police regulations were one run-on sentence, now they're actually numbered, and it actually looks very good. And they're doing the same thing with the zoning bylaw, even though that was done just a few years ago.
Two thousand and nine, yeah.
They didn't change that a lot on numbering, but they cleaned up a lot of the things. They've made some housekeeping changes, and, so we owe them a little bit of information by the end of the month, but then it should be in a format where it can be accepted by the town meeting. And then it would have to, have to go in front of the AG's office again for them to approve it. But they would improve it, approve it as a whole, rather than piece by piece.
Oh, didn't we have this, didn't we approve this at town meeting two years ago?
It was approved.
The funding.
The funding for it was approved two years ago. But now, because it's reformatted, it has to be approved in the new format.
Okay, so town meeting is actually gonna be able to read the full text of the re-codification?
Sure.
Okay.
That'll be available at my office if anybody wanted to come and look at it.
Can you send some to Dick, make sure he gets all the articles?
Larry, is that come dealing with this one?
We will.
Okay.
Will this also be online?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that question.
What's gonna happen is part of the process is, they will post on our site, online services. So you're gonna be able to go on, and you're gonna be able to do like a word search, you're gonna be able to do all of that. They've really come a long way, and even in the last two years, when we first hired them, I've been at a couple of conferences where they've shown some of the stuff you can do. On your phone, you can look it up, do a word search, and it'll take you right to the chapter and all of that. So it's really come a long way. And it's gonna be updated on an annual basis. When they, when we make a change, like any of these other bylaw changes, they'll be appended to the back of the bylaw, and then at the end of the year, they'll insert them all. You know, there's obviously a cost associated with that, but.
General Code discussion?
General Code, yeah.
Yeah, we discussed this process in Denver, and it's a terrific process, and it works really, really well.
And Bob made sure that you could print it out. Some towns, you can't print it out.
PDFs.
He made sure we got the good version.
Um, you wanna cover both of them at the same time?
Sure.
I'm assuming the zoning bylaw.
We will hold a public hearing.
Is the same process.
Right, there were typos, and changing of punctuation, and.
So will the final product be ready by town meeting?
Yeah, it should be ready, it's, it's almost ready now. We just give, have to give them any minor modifications.
Just as long as the public can see it and say, yeah, okay. So they're not approving things blindly?
Correct, no.
Okay. All right, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen support Articles thirty-one and thirty-two as written.
Second.
Discussion, alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Article thirty-three is to amend the zoning bylaws to provide for language on marijuana dispensaries. As you know, the state voted a couple of years ago to make medical marijuana legal, and so they now allow for medical marijuana dispensaries. So Sharon can answer any of the questions you may have on that.
That's the zoning area, just for that, Sharon?
Uh, we did. We selected the S-one district, which happens to be our adult-use district as well. So you can one-stop shop. The AG's office instructed communities that they cannot prohibit altogether, that we had to locate a reasonable location. It couldn't be spot-zoned. You know, it had to make sense. The planning board worked very long and hard on this, and think they've come up with a good bylaw. We worked very carefully with the police chief on the security plans, and, and what his requirements are. And.
I can't believe they put me in charge of this.
Of course. Well, doesn't your ear qualify you?
What a mistake.
So I was at the advisory committee meeting when this was discussed, and I just wanted to mention that the liaison presenting this wanted to make sure we didn't get out of joint about this, because they don't wanna see it go up in smoke, you know.
No, it's kinda funny, then.
And they had munchies.
I often wondered, if this is truly medicinal, why doesn't CVS sell it? I never quite understood.
The security levels.
Because they're for profit.
They're cutting out tobacco sales.
Right.
I, I, I don't know. Still seems strange.
Let's get off the pod here and move on. All right, so this is basically what happened to this, so.
All right, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen support Article thirty-three as written.
Second.
Discussion, alls in favor? Okay. Article thirty-four is another zoning change to Table four dash one, to insert maximum lot coverage language. And Sharon can answer any questions on that.
Currently do not regulate lot coverage in residential districts. We do in non-residential district. And the amount of a lot you can cover by structures, pavement, and other non-pervious surfaces ranges from seventy to eighty-five percent. The planning board looked at the fifteen thousand square foot lot district and the forty thousand square foot lot district, felt that a forty percent lot coverage, or six thousand square feet, was appropriate in the fifteen thousand square foot zone, and that twenty-five percent, or ten thousand square feet, was appropriate in the forty thousand square foot zone. This would likely have very, very little impact on conforming lots, plots that are that big. The people it would impact are the substandard, pre-existing, non-conforming lots. Require them to do some recharge and get creative when they cover huge amounts of their lot.
And the purpose of this is to keep it beautiful, or?
No, the purpose of this is we're a groundwater-dependent community, and by, you know, when you start to pave every lot, lot line to lot line, there's nowhere for the water to perk. So we wanted to make sure that, just as we've covered lot coverage in non-residential districts, we felt to be equitable, it needed to be included in residential districts as well.
Okay. Sharon, are you increasing the size of structures with this?
Under the Mass General laws, we can't restrict the size of structures.
Okay, but you're, you're limiting it to a ten thousand square foot footprint?
That's a good-sized home.
That's unbelievable.
Well, it's the driveway, the deck.
It's like Larry's house.
The driveway, the deck, the tennis court, the swimming pool.
Okay, so it's anything that covers ground?
And prevents the water from going into the ground.
Any impervious.
Any impervious surface.
Okay.
And we looked at, we.
And you're saying, what is it now?
We don't have.
Zero, we don't have a limit.
Okay, so this is the first time we're actually?
Right. We looked at a number of the new homes in Highland Farms, for example. They are way below the ten, the twenty-five percent. We felt that these were very generous numbers, and would allow people to make good use of their property without paving it lot line to lot line.
It, I think there'll be some discussion on this, though, because.
I think there will be. It's a new restriction.
You know, there's typically towns that I've worked in at fifty percent, and, you know, if somebody's got a forty thousand square foot lot, and they, they wanna put a tennis court in, they're not gonna be able to. You know, or a tennis court, combined basketball court, they're not gonna be able to. Because if they only have a pool and a patio, they're not gonna be able to. And I think it's gonna raise some questions. I mean, I, you know, I will, I'm gonna vote against this, but I will put it on the, as an article, because I just think the restrictions, the restrictions are too high on somebody's lot. I mean, it's a lifetime investment, and I think that twenty-five percent, maybe in your opinion, and I respect that, is a lot. In mine, it's not. I mean, so.
I, I respect your opinion too, Mark, and you're in the field. You, you have a really good feel for that.
The last thing I need to do is go down and pull a permit for patio to make sure I'm not going over the ten thousand square foot, you know, and.
If you weren't, if you weren't gonna bring it up, I share the same sentiment. It's, I think it's an over-restriction for residential. And if the intent is because of groundwater, there's infiltration systems, infiltrators, stone and pipe, that you can require, that if they go over the certain percentage, then that is captured and then recharged into the ground.
Right.
It's done, BMPs across, it's not, probably single-family, it's not required.
That's the approach we take in the groundwater protection district.
Yeah, so I would say take that and.
To address your question, Mark, if with the patio, instead of doing an impervious blacktop, you would use pavers?
Well, that's still not, I didn't think that was considered pervious. I mean, 'cause they really, nothing, a real, with the.
If you install them, to be that way?
Well, they use, they use, the stoned, the use of the block is no more used, Bill. It's now that, I'm forgetting the name of the gluey chemical stuff that washes on it and just binds it.
A lot of towns aren't allowing the pervious pavers anymore. They allow them, but they don't take credit, because they fill up with stones.
Believe me, my house is probably under, is well under twenty-five percent, you know?
Yes.
So, but other people might have, I've worked on quite a few jobs where, you know, there's a big driveway, there's an off garage, there's a pool, the size of, you know, this whole media room with a patio, and the people entertain, there's a tennis court and the basketball court. So I just think that ten, twenty-five percent is just too small, in my opinion. I'd go around forty, I'd be okay with that. So if you wanna amend it to forty percent, I mean, the board wants to change it to forty percent, I don't know how Jim feels.
No, I mean, this is a, I wouldn't change it. It's a, I mean, I'm sure the planning boards talked about this, and they have reasons for it.
We haven't had the public hearing yet. We could be less restrictive, but not more.
Yeah.
So. So you could go up to forty percent after discussion?
Could go up to anything greater than twenty-five.
Most towns are fifty percent that I've worked, and that have such a, well, down the Cape.
Look at Walpole.
I don't work in Walpole.
Oh, okay, probably because of ten percent.
Falmouth, I've done it, and it's fifty percent.
And you've got a lot of small lots done.
Yeah, and it's fifty percent. They're all, like you said, they're very, well, very small. One of them was a five thousand square foot lot, so you get twenty-five hundred square feet.
Which by the time you have a reasonable, not even a huge house, and a driveway, you're twenty-five.
The driveway is stone.
Yeah.
It's stone, most, I mean, being scenic, you get, on seashells. So, but I would not, I'm not one for this, so if the board wants to take that motion.
All right, I'll make, I'll make an affirmative motion. I move that the Board of Selectmen support Article thirty-four in its present writing.
Second, by Lorraine, alls in favor? Alls opposed? Thanks for listening. Okay, next.
Article thirty-five, another zoning amendment to Table three dash one, table uses to allow for drive-through facilities. We don't currently have that in the zoning bylaw.
We do, and I provided you a little memo last week. In the general business district, drive-throughs are allowed by special permit. They would not be allowed. In the neighborhood business district, which is Chestnut Green, they're currently special permit planning board to not allow. Highway business allowed to planning board special permit. General and limited industrial, I believe the planning board is going to go allowed to planning board special permit. And also for S-one, allowed to planning board special permit. This is a direct outcome from the master plan, which really, the master plan downtown strategy laid out a vision for Foxborough Center, a vibrant, lively, walkable downtown Foxborough and its social, cultural, civic heart of the community. Downtown shall be compatible with scale, character, and architecture of Foxborough's historic and rural patterns. And it was felt that a lot of drive-throughs create obstacles for pedestrians. The existing drive-throughs would be able to continue. There would be no new drive-throughs in Foxborough Center, the Chestnut Green area.
Without a special permit?
Not at all, none. None.
Sharon, you said general industrial, large industrial may change to planning board special permit?
Yes, the planning board met with the AdCom and discussed this at length. The planning board made the argument that general and limited industrial do not include very much retail. They were hard-pressed to think of what sorts of drive-throughs you would have that were associated with a limited industrial use. But in the event that the world changes, we should allow for it. And the planning board thought that that was a reasonable idea. So it's my sense from the meeting with the AdCom that the article may have a substitute motion to allow to PB special permit and limited and general industrial. But as written, it was allowed to not allow.
So the new town hall can't have a drive-through?
London Dairy Town Hall bought an old bank, and they have a drive-through, and the public loves it.
I like drive-throughs.
The public loves it. They drop off their tax payment and keep going.
And especially for women with children. They love drive-throughs.
Or men with children. Men also have children, Mark, I've noticed.
I know, especially, believe me, I know. So, all right, moving forward, John?
All right, I move that the Board of Selectmen support Article thirty-five in its current writing.
Configuration, yeah. Second.
Discussion, alls in favor? Okay, so much for the drive-through industry. Next.
Article thirty-six is a big amendment to the zoning bylaw, and I believe that has to do with the master planning. Is that correct, Sharon?
It is, and it's a whole. It is, and it's a whole list of uses having to do with the downtown, it's the brew pub article, it's the downtown zoning, which is modeled after the Chestnut Green incentive zoning, you can still do the underlying zoning, but this would allow mixed use as a right, you can change between the uses as a right, makes much more flexible and easier for business owners to respond to market conditions. The other change is having to do with the design review district, making sure that they have some teeth, that the planning board has to follow their recommendation unless they specifically cite why not. And town meeting two years ago adjourned without dealing with the planning board zoning articles, and somehow there were three streets left out of the downtown design review district, those three streets are added back. So the planning board, with respect, in respect for town meeting's time, decided to combine all these pieces into a single Foxborough Center zoning article. They could have put in the drive-through, but they felt that people either like them or don't like them, but people, everybody seems to love brew pubs and design review.
You always get the wrong food if you go through the drive-through.
Yeah, well, but you always go back again.
Sharon, I noticed on the mixed-use project, under brew pubs, you had nightclubs, dance halls. I'm just, if you could help us out, if this was implemented ten, twenty years from now, what will downtown Foxborough look like?
Brew pub.
Mari Gra.
Just wondering.
Where is?
This is section three, allowed by special permit.
Mixed use. Well, those are existing uses. Section three.
I'm sorry, it is section, hold on, nine point seven point five, section three.
One, that's permitted. Oh, that requires a special permit. It currently requires a special permit.
So this is no change to that?
In the downtown, that is no change to it. We felt that there were some special permit uses, which we should still keep an eye on, and nightclubs and dance halls currently require a special permit, and we felt they should continue to require a special permit, even though we want to be friendly and flexible and respond to market conditions and incentivize better design.
I'll go back to my other question, if you had to, if this was all in place and everything involved, and people had the ability to change businesses by right, what would our town eventually look like?
The only way they can change, take advantage of this, is there's higher design criteria, and the very last section of this article has to do with nine point seven point eleven, criteria for review, has to do with the materials, the appearance, it talks about respecting the historic fabric, being sensitive to the historic buildings and districts nearby, and providing, you know, something which is in keeping with the design. So if it looks like it fits in Foxborough Center, do you particularly care whether it's a business, or an office, or a home, or something else? If you drive by, it's gonna look like it belongs.
Yeah, the look and feel, I'm just hoping that we don't evolve into a blight by right.
Well, this, this requires a higher level of design in order to take advantage of the mixed use and flexibility and uses, so that it's not gonna be blight, it's gonna have to be a lot better than what you can do as a matter of right in order to apply for this.
Okay, so it's trying to-
Right.
Push us up the-
And of course, the planning board site plan review would always come into effect should the change be material or drastic, they would come back before the planning board for additional review.
And I like the section that you put in there on the pre-application meeting to come in beforehand, talk about it.
We're really trying to do that, we're trying to do department heads' meetings to iron out issues so that it's transparent, people know what they're facing.
John?
Okay. Article thirty-six. I move that the Board of Selectmen support Article thirty-six as written and presented.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And?
The last article on the warrant, I know we're going back to another one, but Article thirty-seven, amending zoning bylaw by deleting the existing section five point four and replacing with a new five point four, non-conforming, single, and two-family residential structures.
Remember last year, Mr. Overe and Mr. Kaspari rewrote the whole non-conforming section to track the numerous changes in Massachusetts case law, and it permitted the non-conformances of over twenty-five percent. If it's under twenty-five percent, you come to Mr. Kaspari, and he makes findings that it's not more detrimental. If it was over twenty-five percent, you went to the Board of Appeals, and they were required to make a similar finding. This replaces the finding with a special permit, which means the planning, the Board of Appeals, excuse me, needs to make a finding, but they can condition their approval. So instead of binary yes or no, it would be yes if you do X, Y, and Z, and it felt that it would be much more accommodating to people's special problems with non-conforming lots, sidelines, setbacks.
Isn't that the way it is up at, We Met Road, up in that area, they have, you're allowed so much up there, Bill, similar to this?
There's a significant number of non-conforming lots and structures in town, they've been there a hundred years.
A lot of the downtown.
Our bylaw is pretty good, in my opinion, in addressing alterations, reconstructions, extensions of non-conforming structures. Really, this is just, it served two purposes, just added some clarity, because the zoning board dealt with a lot of issues over the past year, and there was discussion on cleaning up the language to make it clear for them. So, that was added in here, and then as Sharon pointed out, is all that was required for the board to do to what we call extend a non-conforming structure was to make a determination that the extension is no more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming. It's a broad brush, you can't condition it, yeah, it's up or down, and that standard is hard to deny, I mean, the house next door might be right to the street, you want to go almost to it, so is it more detrimental, probably not. This will allow them to make a finding and then a special permit and condition it, for example, might need some fencing, some shrubs, something to lessen the fact that it's going closer to a setback, something like that. So it's a good thing, this is a good thing.
Any other questions? John?
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen support Article thirty-seven as written.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Okay, everybody? Okay, back to number twenty-five.
Thank you, Bill and Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So Sharon, just so we all understand, there won't be a drive-through at the medical marijuana facility.
But there will be at the brew pub.
At the brew pub.
Okay.
Hey, Mark, I'll make a motion, then we can have a discussion.
Okay.
Okay, I move that the Board of Selectmen support Article twenty-five as written.
Second.
Discussion.
Let me start, if I might, I've had a meeting with both Mark and Jim to discuss this the other day, and I raised, with Jim from the very beginning, that, you know, I'm all in favor of you having the Child Safety Committee and doing everything that they need to do to educate the public, but I do not think it belongs in the general bylaw. As I indicated to both of them, that there are six or seven committees that are listed in the general bylaw, and they're there for specific reasons, either because they deal with a big budgetary item like the CIP committee, or their statutory in nature like the Historical Committee and the Board of Recreation. It's a very limited number, and we have somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty to seventy-five committees in town, and none of those other ones are listed in the bylaw. I think it's for a reason, and so my recommendation to both of them was that, do whatever you want with the committee, you know, set guidelines, policies, and all that, but it does not belong in the bylaw.
Okay, rebuttal?
Yeah, not so much a rebuttal, but, and in fairness, I was gonna say the same thing that Bob said, in case the motion just went, because, and Bob was clear, he's not against the committee, but where it is placed, I disagreed a little bit, a lot in some areas, but this is my reasoning. So you look at section four, let me just go back a little bit, because this has been kind of kicking around with the Board of Selectmen, is a Board of Selectmen article. A year plus ago, a committee started to form, we did a lot of work, and this is the goal, is simply to address the issue of the lack of awareness and lack of action regarding child sexual abuse, to reduce the opportunity for something as bad as happened in many towns decades before, so it's, we're not going back into investigations, we're basically bringing awareness and education. So the committee that we formed, the Board of Selectmen formed, there were seven people, and I think it's important to know the level of the people that are working on this, so we tried to go into sectors to represent the widest variety of people in Foxborough. So we have Foxborough Public Schools, Deb Spinelli from the superintendent's been working on it, Board of Recreation, Jeff Downs, who's on the board, Tim O'Leary, who's a detective and a youth crisis officer for Foxborough Police Department, Pastor Bill Dudley from the Union Church, Vicki Lowe from the Council of Aging and Human Services, Bob Correa, who's a member-at-large, and Linda Walsh, who's representing the private educational and social institutions. So these people have been working since we appointed them, and their goals and objectives are stated, and it's, it is a little lengthy, it's two or three pages, but where I think it makes sense to put it is under section four, so you look at the other section, the other appointed, so the town bylaw has two sections, it's the elected officials and the appointed officials. So this would sit side by side with the Historic Commission, the Board of Appeals, the Council of Aging, Historic District Commission, Permanent Municipal and Building Committees, the Constables, the Registered Land Surveyor, and the Board of Recreation. I see this committee as equal, if not more important, than some of these boards, because it represents a lot of our past, but more importantly, it represents a tremendous amount of our future. So to not put it in the bylaw, especially what's happened over the seventies and the eighties and going into the nineties to Foxborough, you know, I think there was a tremendous mistake back then in to repeat it by not giving it the respect that it needs to put it in the bylaw, to give it longevity and the credit that it needs, I think that's a mistake, so I'm asking the board, it may not fit into the exact square, whole round peg scenario, but I think it needs to be here, and I think it needs to be here for a very long time. A Board of Selectmen can come in three or four years, a different board, and not appoint them, and it goes away. By keeping it in the bylaw, nobody can do that unless it goes to a town meeting, so that's why I think it's important to be in the bylaw. And then some people have been patiently sitting here, if you wanted to hear an update of some of the stuff that they're doing, to kind of put it in perspective, I know the chairman's here, Lynda's here, Chief O'Leary's worked on it, Bill Dudley.
And I appreciate that, but the question I ask the board first, before we get into this longer, longer discussion, is anybody on this board opposed to this?
I just want to ask Bob, he had recommended this not be a bylaw, but is there any other mechanism by which it could still be effective, and still, and the Board of Selectmen still appoint, and the Board of Selectmen still have ownership of this committee?
You created it, it's your, it's your baby, as long as, you know, the board continues to appoint members, you know, it's up to the committee to keep it going beyond that, you know, even if it's in the bylaw, doesn't guarantee that it continues. You know, the, I did happen to run into Frank Spillane, and I asked him about it as the moderator, he said absolutely not, it doesn't belong in there. And I said, do you mind if I bring that up at the meeting? And he said, no, not at all, because-
So you're saying the committee doesn't belong in there, or the write-up?
Anything in the bylaw. He doesn't feel that it belongs in there.
So, what's the distinction between this committee and another one, you're saying it's because it's state, does a state mandate that you need to?
Most of them in there are statutory, Board of Recreation statutory, Historical Commission, the CIP, because it's dealing with large budgetary items that have to be dealt with every year, and the permanent municipal building, every time you construct a building, you need them to be involved in that project. So that's the nature of the committees that are in there.
So the nine, so the Historic Commission?
Yep.
Board of Appeals, Council on Aging, Historic District Commission, those are all state-mandated to be in there?
They're statutory, in my understanding.
Okay. CIP is not, but you're saying it has higher standard?
Because of the budgetary items and the permanent municipal building committee, because of the nature of the work they do, they deal with millions and millions of dollars and big projects, so, that's why those have gotten in there over the years.
Okay, so is there anything in that list, I don't have the complete list, that is not state-mandated?
Well, the permanent municipal building, CIP, and I don't, you know, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay, so, so, and I, I respect what you had said when we met, I mean, it's two or three or four pages. What if they compromise with something like this, this matches the language, and I'll read it, that's in the bylaw already, okay, so it's basically under section four.
You can read it, but it's not gonna change my feeling, I don't believe it belongs in the bylaw.
Okay.
Outside of the bylaw, do whatever you want, but I don't, you know, and I'll let you read it.
Jim, one question, are you, are you concerned that future Boards of Selectmen will let this wither away?
Yes, because I think the committee's doing a fantastic job, and I think we're gonna get our arms around it, and it's gonna be addressed, and then over time, because it's addressed, it might get forgotten, and it's gonna wither away. What I think is a good compromise is, and I'll read it very brief, "There shall be a Child Safety Committee to consist of seven regular members with a mission to raise awareness of the prevalence and circumstances in which children are being sexually abused, and promote simple and effective ways for the public to be aware of risk factors and educate to reduce the opportunity of abuse in the town of Foxborough. The committee shall prepare an annual report submitted to the Board of Selectmen for its consideration and approval. Committee members to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen alternately for the term of three years, and put a footnote, one, that references the goals and objectives that we have in the warrant article." This is less wordage than the majority of the ones that are in there, but I think of higher, higher, higher importance of some of them that are in there. So I think it makes complete sense to me, other than the understanding that it hasn't been done before, and I think the reason it hasn't been done before is the reason that we have to do it right now.
See, I'm with you and me on this one. I think Bob already knew that.
Can I just, if, I'm looking to the future, if we're successful here, the AdCom approves it, regardless of the AdCom, if the town meeting approves it, the Attorney General could strike it down.
Correct.
And I don't think that's the worst thing, because then I would take it, I think we would take it to the state and change the way that the state does it, because I think we could be leading in this area that other towns have not done before.
Absolutely, that's, I made that statement months ago, that that might have to be the route we take, because I didn't know if it was gonna be something that we'd be able to do as a bylaw, or whatever, I thought it might have to be petition to the state legislators, and it's another reason why I wanna, I'm rerunning for the board, because I want to make sure this mission gets completed, and I'm hoping for the board's support here tonight, as Jim is, and I know everybody in this audience is. And it's not about disagreeing with Bob, in my eyes, it's, you know, Bob's been a great leader and given me great advice, but I just can't put this ball down, I need to continue to the end, and what I want-
Let me ask one more question.
What I want to happen is exactly what Jim just said, I want it to go to the state legislation, I want a petition in the Senate and the House.
And do that, and don't put it in the bylaw, I mean, that's, like I said, anything outside of that, but I don't think it belongs in this document.
I understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Do I, Mr. John first?
I think he's gone on the same path.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm just, I'm just confused by the message here, because I understand how passionate you, someone you feel, as a town, you feel passionate about this issue, and I, I'm fine with that, I think that's, that's a good thing to do. The question is the mech, method in the, in the, in the- The question is the method and the way which you're trying to get this message across. If your true concern is to try and get this, elevate this discussion to a higher level with the legislature, and propose it as an issue that should be adopted on a statewide level and do it through the legislature.
I think if it gets to, and I understand, but to get to the level of legislation, turning, the Attorney General turning this down, my argument would be if we think there's merit for a permanent building, municipal building committee to be formed and in our bylaw that looks at the bricks and mortar, how on earth could they say that looks at the safety of the children, less important than that to be in a bylaw? So if the permanent building commission for the bricks and mortar is not mandated by the state, but the town thinks it's as important to put in our bylaw, how can this fall short of that? So I don't think it's going to get to the Attorney General for them to strike this down.
You know, the other thing, we've had other bylaws, public intoxication bylaws, AG said, no, you can't do that, precedes 1975, certain chapter, whatever law. This gets us, I'll say it, it gets your publicity, it gets you recognized by the newspaper, it gets you on the town warrant, there gets to be discussion on the town warrant floor. And then, you know what, if the AG kicks back and it comes back to us, Foxborough gets denied. Now it puts a little bit more pressure on the legislation to proceed with our next request, because we, you know, you get kicked back, now you're going to kick back again. So I think if you just go to the AG, it's just like on somebody's desk. If we keep moving forward, what this mission has been set out to do, then it has more teeth. It's a simple opinion from a simple guy, but that's the way I'm looking at it.
Bill actually didn't ask the question I was going to ask. If we were to put this in the general bylaws, while it may be atypical, it's not wrong.
Correct.
I mean, there's no rules that guide what can be a bylaw.
I've got other concerns, and I raised them with these gentlemen as well. Your committee's trying to go on a different path, which is fine. We already have reporting requirements from the police, fire, it's all statutory, and you're trying to, you know, bring it deeper than that. I get that. But when you put this in here, and now you're creating an obligation on the town because you're referencing the committee and everything that the committee does, and if somebody drops the ball there, you're creating a legal liability that does not exist today.
And I think that's, I think that would be my speech to do it. Because if somebody dropped the ball and didn't do it-
You're creating a legal liability that doesn't exist, and you're exposing the town.
If this was-
You're exposing the town to millions of dollars in damages.
But if we also put this on as a warrant, it'll be reviewed by council, and he will give us, you know, his opinion on that, and we've discussed that. But the thing is, you need to take the next step. I don't, I think this discussion needs to be held at town meeting, throughout the whole town, not just settled here at this table. I mean, it's just, it's something that affected so many people, not just from the town, but, you know, we have to be the first community in Massachusetts, New England, to come forward with this, to push it to the next level, and I want to be part of that.
So I just wanted to ask, you know, where this would involve review by the AG. Can we ask Dick Gellerman to submit this to the AG for review, to get an opinion from them, to see, because at that point, if they reject it outright, that's what you're really looking for, is the next step, to go to legislation.
The two months might not be enough with the AG, that's the problem.
They would do it, that's not the issue.
So it's, yeah, it's not the Attorney General's issue, is if, and it comes down to, I think that's what it is, Bob, it's a liability to the town, that if someone doesn't report, if it's a teacher, or it's a rec worker, or if it's someone under the-
They're already mandated by state law to do that. It's whatever else you do to go beyond that, you're creating a liability situation that doesn't exist today.
Understood, I understand that.
Welcome to the fire.
No, it's okay. I think, well, first of all, I don't know enough about the discussion of this issue, the background, history of this discussion, but I understand the passion about the issue. I understand the board wants to be a leader in this issue, and that the town wants to take a leadership role on the issue itself. I just don't, I'm not sure you want to create, you want to use the wrong vehicle to get there, you know, and is my point, my point in this discussion, is that use the right focus, the right platform to get the message out, but don't use the wrong vehicle to do it, because then it may come back to hurt you in another way. So I, I understand Bob's concern here. I don't know the background enough to really weigh in strongly on this, but I think if you really want to be a leader in this issue, you can do that without having to go with the truth. And I think that, you know, the message you're getting out is a really good one. I have no issue with that at all, I think it's a great message. But don't put yourself in a position where it's going to come back to hurt you in a way which you didn't anticipate.
Yeah, and I understand that, you're coming in a little late, but I've thought about that, and I know, you know, path A or path B, and I don't take this lightly, and I think path A that we're on, I think is the most expeditious way to get there. Path B may be safer, but in the big picture, it's not going to accomplish what I think needs to get accomplished in this town. And there may be some liabilities along the way, but sometimes I think that's a good thing, because it opens up a little sunshine to it.
I think, in the old way, town council, yeah, we can ask for review, we're going to review this article anyways, you know, but-
Shouldn't we wait for that review before we-
Well, we've had that discussion too, but we don't have time.
He's reviewing all of them, right?
Whether or not you support, in whatever way, shape, or form.
Yeah. And then he reviews.
He'll come back from a legal perspective anyway.
Right.
I'm not a lawyer, and I wouldn't complain if you want, but certainly, that's, town council should weigh in on this issue before it gets to that point. Ultimately, if the AG says this is not the right approach for this, then I'll come back, and then you can-
And AdCom's going to review it too. So when AdCom will give their point of view on it, but I just want to keep the wheels rolling here.
But if there's a legal issue, it'll get you anyways by town council.
As all the warrant articles.
I'm agreeable to getting this thing onto the floor at town meeting.
Yeah.
I, you know, I agree that the liability is a huge issue, and I think we're underestimating what it could be, but I think I'd like to move this forward and have a solid debate on it. So although I think it's, it's-
We need an extra night.
It's still slightly flawed. I'd like to move it along.
I just have a question. Bob, your concern is liability?
I have two concerns. First is it doesn't belong here.
Yeah.
You have a committee-
Because those are mandated committees.
They're a limited number for a reason, okay? You know, you just don't throw every committee in there, and I'm not minimizing what this committee is, I'm really not. But if you look at the nature of the committees that are in there, they have historical, statutory, or financial reasons for being in there. And that's what I think they should stay at.
Okay.
Okay. But then, secondly, I think by putting it in there, you're creating a liability that does not exist today.
If the committee were mandated by the state, if it becomes a statute, is the liability decreased to the town?
No, because if you don't follow the statute, then you're opening yourself up to a liability.
So you're still open to the same, you know, like the-
I think we're raising the bar a little higher.
Fifty years ago, none of that legislation existed, and there was no reporting either. It was baby steps back then, so I still think it's baby steps. And we move forward. I mean, we just got to keep pushing the issue here. That's, I know it's a hard topic for you, Bob, and I don't think we discreet much in last year, you know, but if at all, but respectfully, I disagree.
And that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. I'm just, my role and Bill's role will be to keep you looking at the other end of it, you know, the devil's advocate, the legal requirements, the liability issues, you know, he's not going to let you walk into a fight not being armed, and I'm telling you, you're creating a liability. One that doesn't exist today, and I think it's a big mistake. But you guys have to make the decision.
It won't exist until it gets approved, and we're just taking that step now, just to move one more step closer and see where it goes.
In fairness to what the board's trying to do here, I think the board wants to take the step to get it to the next level for discussion. And at that point, the issues that have been discussed here today are all valid points. The thing that needs to get, the board needs to hear about, okay, what are the legal, what's the legal minefield that we have to walk into here? And if we take big steps sideways around certain things to get there, that's fine. But I think, it's clear the passion is here for this issue. Our job, you know, Bob Sharp, has been, my job is to point out the issues that you're going to face when you deal with a situation.
As long as it's an open discussion, because there are liabilities for implementing it and not following it.
There's liabilities in everything we do.
There's also liabilities for not having it, and, you know, a good example is next week, this committee has reached out to just about every youth organization in town, and they're having a summit, Darkness to Light. So they're reaching out to 100, 200 people, I don't know, 200 people are going to come. Those 200 people at least are going to be more aware, so something might not happen if this committee wasn't here. So, and Bob, I believe me, you're doing your job, and it's tough to say no to this, because it's such a hot topic. But I think that debate, as long as it's on both sides, and it's going to go back in history, and it's going to go to the future, and we'll see where it comes out at town meeting.
Ryan, anything to add? Because we've got to move on, we're way over here.
Personally, I think I would just feel more comfortable understanding better from town council what those liability issues would be, so-
You'll get that, that much you will get.
I think I-
Did I make a motion?
No. Oh, no, you did.
Yeah, we did.
It was second, first, second, we're having discussion, yes.
So I'm just saying, I think I'll abstain today, because I would like to hear, can we have, Bob, can we have Dick at our next meeting to discuss those issues?
If we have time. I think Dick has to vent it first.
He's got to vent it all.
It's going to take him a little while, do some research, some case law study and everything else, but I think-
I already asked the AG, and they don't, they've never seen this.
Oh, they will. So, all right. So I know everybody here in the audience who-
Doesn't it hap, don't you have to make a decision tonight if it's going to be-
We are, we're going to make a decision.
Right? That's what I want to know. Okay.
So I'm just saying, I know everybody here wants to weigh in and everything, but I think you can count the votes up here, and I'd like to move the meeting forward. If it's something you're really passionate about saying, please, two minutes, come to the mic.
That's right.
I have an old saying, oh, when to count your votes in a room.
Oh, you say that all the time.
Motion. Motion made and seconded. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed, all's abstaining for future reference? Okay, 401. Thank you very much. All right, and we are not going to do the minutes tonight.
I spend hours on those things.
Oh, good, you can redo them on your plane flight to wherever.
Mark, can I ask you a favor? We've got a bunch of meeting minutes. Diane said a lot of these have already been reviewed, and they're back in our packet again with no explanation.
These are supposed to be executive session minutes.
Diane explained that we've already approved some of these, then they went to the attorney, the attorney changed.
I get a call from Sandra Herman saying that executive session minutes need to be reviewed and released.
All right. These are-
And they only say executive session on it.
I'm going to go through, I'll go through all of them.
That the October, November, it was just minor wording changes.
I think she was a little-
Okay.
The January, February, we haven't done it.
Okay. So, but that was, she was, I said, just put it on. I didn't, I thought it was executive session that we wanted to, you know, we're trying to, well, the clerk's supposed to keep up with the minutes to be released, you know, he's been inundated by this.
We need to go into executive session.
So I need a motion to go on executive session too.
I move that we enter into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, United Steelworkers, AFL-CIO, CLC, police union grievance, pending litigation, Town of Foxborough versus Great Divide, Randy's Collins.
Second.
All those in favor? All solely to adjourn.
Solely to adjourn from open session.
Second.
That roll call, yes?
G?
Yes.
Mark, yes?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Good night, everybody.